Well, if if you're willing to consider the conditionally permitted in number four. If you are, I would revise number five to say conditional uses must. Because this wouldn't be just industrial, this will be anything and it and it applies. And the next thing we're going to talk about in the next hearing. Uh, conditional uses must only be permitted if a critical review of the proposed use determines that with appropriate conditions, the use will not adversely impact the surrounding area. And that's come up. As you already know, I think in the RV park thing, but that would apply across the board to any conditional use. And there's the whole idea of a conditional use permit is that. You can apply conditions that will mitigate or eliminate the impacts. And if they can't, then they shouldn't be granted. That's all I have. Thank you.
I have a question for you. So with regard to uh, four. Is your concern that? I mean, if it read uh. Identify the comprehensive plan and as so far as industrial is concerned, it's owned industrial. Would you still have a problem with that? Seems to me that if it's zoned, if it's if it's in the comprehensive plan is mixed use, it's zoned industrial. Then I don't know why it should have to be condition and condition.
I get, yeah, I can't argue with that, I guess. But my my concern is that you all had said before, because I I had. Suggested earlier to pull it industrial out of mixed use because it shouldn't be with residential. And you all correctly pointed out that how are you going to identify ahead of time what areas of the county might be suitable? You can't really make that be a land use somewhere or it's not practicable to do that. So.
But there are.
But you're going to rely, but you can rely on. Well, sure. Well, yes, exactly. But we're talking about land use now. And so. Because of that. You don't want to have industrial and high density residential. But I didn't see a better alternative after you, we discussed all that to not have them in the same mixed use. So therefore you have to be super cautious. And I don't think you can, you, the argument then had been, well, we, the zoning will take care of that. Well, that's nice. But I think you need something a little stronger in the comp plan than to 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 hope that you have the right people elected to make sure the zoning does.
Yeah. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for Dave.
Sure.
They've, I read your letter and then I read your, their changes in here. And it's, and correct me if I'm wrong, you're concerned that as. As is proposed, commercial industrial uses and areas identified in the comprehensive plan, suitable for such should be unconditionally permitted. You're concerned that there are certain types of uses that should have conditional permitted, conditional permitted.
Well. My concern is that in the mixed use. Land designation right now, land use, you have high res, high density residential and industrial. Well, I mean, you don't want to have high density residential next to the parking lot of a factory, right? So you have to deal with that somehow. I don't, I don't see a better way.
Well, and and one make, one option may be to uh, what we're talking about is a suburban zone. In that mixed use and and we likewise could just get rid of the suburban zone in the mixed use designation. As well. So that's one other way to handle that.
Well, I. I wasn't referring to zones at all. I'm referring to land use designation. So if you put high designated, high density residential. And industrial in the same land use designation, you have to put some kind of guardrails in there so they don't get put next to each other. And I think to just be hopeful that zoning will take care of that. To me, doesn't make any sense.
The way it's written though, it. With with your edits to it. It sure makes it sound like any kind of commercial or industrial use is going to have to have a condition use for it.
Well, maybe that, maybe it does.
Is that what you believe it says?
No, I believe it says what I said it said.
Well. But because I'm reading, you know, commercial industrial uses in areas identified in the comp plan should be conditionally permitted. That, that makes me, leads me to believe that any commercial or industrial use, even if designated as mixed use in the comp plan. Is required to have a condition use for them.
Well. To be quite honest, I was focused on industrial. But now that you raise that, I don't think it's unreasonable. I mean, you're putting a lot of different kinds of land uses into one mixed. Use. And again, I don't think you can just assume that zoning is going to take care of that. It'd be nice if it did, but.
It's clear that that land use designation will have multiple zoning districts and. That's what the complaint says, right?
Well, it says different uses. Well, oh, you mean in the text? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, it's clear that there will be different zones in mixed use. One of which I imagine will be industrial.
Right.
One commercial, one suburban. And. And they won't be intermingled by property by property by property. There's still some boundary condition issues perhaps. You have a boundary between one of those commercial or industrial zones, suburban. I don't know how you deal, but there's always boundary line issues, boundary issues between adjacent zones. So. It's not obvious why if we identified a a commercial zone, why you'd want commercial uses to have to get a conditional use for it to be in a commercial zone.
No, that's fair. And again, I was focused on the industrial. I really was.
Well, I'd say the same thing about industrial. If I had an industrial zone. By the way, I'll maybe back up a minute and say my personal opinion is the whole industrial use table needs a lot of work because there's a lot of industrial uses in there that. Don't appear to have much of an impact on their neighbors by virtue of how they're defined. You know, zero, zero light on the, on the property line, zero noise, zero fumes, well, you know. It it's pretty restrictive what some of them are. Um, so it's not obvious that a blanket requirement for conditional use permits for industrial uses in industrial zones is needed. In my opinion.
Yeah.
I, I think there are some industrial uses.
I agree.
Asphalt plants being one of them, we discussed that before.
Well.
Really?
As a, as a, just a sort of. High level comment. I mean, I'd like to see that industrial area in the zoning code ordinances reworked. And sort of have two different categories. Generically, I would call them heavy industry and light industry. And yeah, the heavy industry stuff is potentially has impact on their neighbors and and maybe conditional use permits are warranted there. But there's a lot of things the way it's written today that I would put in the, it uses, I put in the category of their light industry. And in many cases, I'd be hard pressed to tell the difference between one of those and a commercial use.
Right.
So.
And in all honesty.
The code needs a lot of work.
In the, in all honesty, I, in writing and making these suggestions, I did not go in and look at that part of his own code. I did.
Okay. Uh, any other comments?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. My name's Jennifer Ekstrom. I'm with the Idaho Conservation League and I appreciate the opportunity to give some late comments in this process. I'm super grateful for your commitment to coming back to this implementation section as you stated you would a couple of years ago when it was first done up. So thanks for getting back to it. Um, I want to say that we are generally in support of the comments you received from Project 7B on, I believe that was May 27th. And just have a couple of points that I'd like to emphasize. Um, starting in the natural resources section under goal and objective number five. Um, it seems that that goal or objective um. Might be a bit extending beyond the purview of the county. And it might be worth considering adding in a reference to Panhandle Health District. Um, the count such as things. Okay. Page eight.
Okay, sorry.
And so my suggestion would be perhaps consider adding in the county will work with Panhandle Health District. Um, to protect water resources by giving adequate notice to review applications. Um, since it is their purview to determine the soil density and intensity of use and determine what sort of wastewater system is appropriate. Um. And then moving on to the policies under the natural resources section. Um, on policy number one, I just want to bring up the conversation again of using shall or should versus will. And understanding that shall and should are more permissive and less, less um restrictive as far as a policy goes. And on this one, it seems appropriate to say best management practices for waterway setbacks will be instituted. To reduce erosion and sedimentation into waterways. Um, since the county already has those codes enacted, it doesn't seem like it's a far stretch to say you will do that. Um, on policy number four, I just want to say yes, thank you, that um. That looks great. Protect water quality by creating standards for development in close proximity to shorelines. That sounds great. Um, and then policy number seven. This is a topic that we have discussed sort of at length in the past in in the natural resources section when you were updating that section. Um, and currently this draft reads to the extent of the county's jurisdiction and consistent with the Clean Water Act, comma delineated wetlands should be protected. And so what I would like to suggest is that instead of saying consistent with the Clean Water Act, that says. Consistent with National Wetlands Inventory, that an applicant would be required to get a delineation of those wetlands. And then those wetlands should be protected. And so the problem with saying consistent with the Clean Water Act is that a couple of years ago, the. The Supreme Court decision Sackett versus EPA exempted about 50% of wetlands nationally from protections under the Clean Water Act. And there are a number of high quality wetlands in North Idaho specifically that are very unique and. Um, very high quality that are deserving of protection. And so that is my suggestion for. That policy to not make it dependent on Clean Water Act jurisdiction.
Sorry, before you go on, do you mind telling me again that the name of that wetlands inventory?
National Wetlands Inventory. And so it is on the Bonner County Public Maps. There's a layer that you can turn on and off that shows that National Wetlands Inventory. And it also shows like what type of wetland it is. Um, however, it's a Idaho Fish and Game document that I would be happy to provide to all of you. Um, I know that some of you have already seen it pretty extensively, but the Idaho Fish and Game came up. Um, many years ago with studies that show which of the. Wetlands in North Idaho are of very high value, very unique resources. Um, we have specifically several peat bog wetlands, which are very unique and very rare. And they're also very susceptible to degradation um when they are impacted either by pollutants or changes in hydrology. And so they, once we lose them, they're gone forever and they provide great resources as far as. You know, protecting against floods and keeping the water clean and protecting against drought in the summer. So I think that wetlands deserve the highest level of protection that could be possible in by Bonner County. Um. And I guess just to carry on with wetlands, um, in the special areas and sites section, there's another opportunity that. We, we talked about it when you all were revising that section about there are a number of wetlands that could be acknowledged in that section as being very special areas. Um, so I'd encourage you to possibly look at that again and. Um, I think that that is all of the emphasis I wanted to add today. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments on uh? This file? Anybody online, Jake?
There was some people online, I don't see.
Okay. All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. We'll bring it back for discussion uh, actually with the commission. What we want to do with this particular. Implementation component.
Mr. Chairman. Since I have Jennifer's comments. Close my memory right now. I like to go ahead and address those.
Sure, fire away.
You know, that, that ends inventory map, that is thus. You know, I have, I have emails from US Army Corps from Megan Bilgen. And and those emails are actually in the record on natural resource section when Swati was here putting that together. It's already part of our record, all those emails I've received. She said that neither the the wetlands inventory map. Or US Fish and Wildlife, nor the Idaho Fish and Games map are regulatory. They, they need to be recon, they need to be delineated. They're, they're best guesses. They're not all delineated at all. You know, that, that's in the record in the natural resource component already. I think we discussed that.
Yeah.
At length. Yeah, very much.
Uh, now we really, we've closed the public hearing, so. Isn't a workshop, otherwise I'd love it. No, you want, you want to let her? No, well, the entire session right now is, is public hearing. We're in deliberation, if anything, right now. Because if you close public testimony, then that's now we're in deliberation. We can take further public testimony if the chair agrees and the commission agrees, but just.
You, you want it?
Well.
I close, I close the public comment.
Right. So we can, but. Our bylaws say that it can be opened up again if we all agree. Not saying we do at this point. I'm just clarifying. We are, I understand that.
Okay.
Um. All right, do we want to open up public comment again? Anybody? I don't think so, so. Um. Just to, just to kind of highlight that, I mean, we, we talked about this for at length. You know, we, we heard all the arguments about the special areas and stuff. Reason it was in the, it was, it was. Prior comp plan discussed it in natural resources and we thought we would uh, would follow that format. Since it was done by a consultant, which everybody seems to like consults. We, we struggled with the language on this uh, because. The county does not have the ability. To protect wetlands. I mean, we have, we have. Certain abilities with regard to setbacks and so on. And that's what this was intended to deal with. Because we, you know, we, we went around and round about this and. There's just no way that we, we can adopt, the county can adopt or should adopt. The whole series of regulations and. And concepts that have been developed by either the Army Corps of Engineers or other, other uh, regulatory agencies that have jurisdictional relevance. So we, we tried to craft something that says, you know, we will, we will, we will protect them to the extent of our jurisdiction. And that's, that's what we tried to convey, uh, is that we, we will do it. If it's been delineated, then we will, we will, we will, we will use our setbacks. You know, we can't, there's not a whole lot more the county can do. So that's, that's the reason it's written the way it is. I, I understand your, your concern about the language consistent with the Clean Water Act. You know, I don't know. I don't know if anybody has an insight into that. The National Wetlands Inventory doesn't necessarily follow the Clean Water Act. And so I understand it. Um, and so far as what, what wetlands may be on that, I think there are wetlands on there that are not. Now. Uh, associated with they, they. The water body that's waters of the United States, which is what the Sackett decision. Said was the jurisdiction of the Clean Water Act. I don't have a problem. I mean, I don't know, maybe I do, uh, uh. I, I guess I would consider striking consistent with the Clean Water Act, maybe. But it's to the extent of the kind of jurisdiction delineated wetlands should be protected, that, that seems to me to be. Be, you know, have to be there. So what does everybody else think about that?
And and Mr. Chairman, I, and I brought that code in session. I don't have it off the top of my mind, my memory right now. Uh, but the states. Is limited. We, we cannot go ahead and create restrictions more stringent than the Clean Water Act. That's an Idaho statute.
Yeah, I think there was, I think you're right. I think that was a reason why we put that in there. System with the Clean Water Act, so. Okay, well, you look for that. There are a couple of things that I.
Says, right, yeah, I, I found it. Under uses of wetlands. Which would be. It's of the adopted component. Under section one or 1.3 wetlands, the last. Under uses of wetland is four paragraphs and then five. To the extent of the county's jurisdiction and consistent with the Clean Water Act, the linear wetlands should be protected.
I know, that's right out of there.
That's right, that's what we wrote. So what we discuss further, I, I'm looking for it. Saying that, and it, the above text talks about the NWI being an indicator and the other things an indicator. So if those basic. Documents indicate the presence of wetland. Then the applicant, if they're involved with their property, would have to. Hire a delineator and absolutely delineate the wetland. But I don't see that in our policy.
That's not the issue though. The issue. Well, I think, I think, um. As I recall, the Sackett case came down about the time we were discussing this.
Right.
Yeah. I think, I think the uh. The concern is that there are wetlands that are no longer considered wetlands under the Clean Water Act because of the Sackett decision. And.
Yeah.
And therefore, um.
How do we get there?
The language consistent with the Clean Water Act may not encompass other things on the National Wetlands Inventory, which. You know, if they're on there, you know, we suggest that they be delineated. Prior to any development approval. Then this language would seem not to include the. Because it wouldn't be consistent with the Clean Water Act. Which has to be associated with, associated with waters of the United States. That's the issue I see.
Right, so I'm, uh, I was trying to. Bring out of the text relative to wetlands. Um, before we lead into goals and policies. That's what we intended to do with the uh, text and the components. I understand. So.
This would be somewhat changing with it.
Yeah. No, that's, that's the trouble. I don't know that we've got a. Pure bunch of stepping stones to get to the. To get to the uh, goals and objectives and policies. For natural resources.
I, I did find that statute, Mr. Chairman, it's title 39, 39, that's 175. There's another one in there, I'll find it, you know. Uh, and it's regarding environment, environmental quality and health and safety. And so this is uh, directly related to, if I'm not mistaken, Idaho DEQ. Uh, the underground authority overall surface and also. Groundwater protection part of the state. But anyway, it says. Ward may promulgate rules to implement a state programming program. Such rules shall not impose conditions or requirements more stringent or broader in scope than the Clean Water Act.
I guess that's why we had it in there consistent with Clean Water Act.
Yeah.
All right, uh, well, I have a couple other issues. Um, that were brought up by 7B. Um, I think most of the issues that brought up by 7B, we've, we've discussed at length and, you know, uh, prior to this hearing. But there is, I think they, they brought a couple of uh, interesting points. Uh, under policy six. Under uh, natural resources. They, uh, they, they, they're concerned that. It's the policy six as the county should implement shoreline development land use regulations that address those areas. And the county can enforce its regulations. Their question was, is areas ambiguous? Should we just say within the jurisdiction of the county? I don't know. It seemed to me that's what it means, but. I don't know, do we need to say that? More specifically?
Do you think the context of the, of that paragraph changes?
I don't think so.
So you were, you're suggesting Alan, that. Uh. Following land use regulations, you would say. Uh, within the jurisdiction of the county. So the county should implement shoreline development land use regulations within the jurisdiction, that are within the jurisdiction of the county, something throughout that.
Within a jurisdiction.
Does anybody remember what the intent was of the way it's written?
I'm wondering, because we have a lot of discussions about, there, there are good things to do. With shoreline development that the county cannot enforce effectively. Um, but you know, things like. How much fertilizer to use on your lawn that's adjacent to a water, things like that. Uh, and we understood that, you know, it's a good idea. There's, there's some good ideas there, but those aren't things that the county can effectively force. And I think that's what led us to the idea of when somebody came along to the planning department with the DLP or Development Advice for Shoreline Property. We would hand up a copy of, I can't remember the name of it, but that. That document that had, was full of the good things you should do for shoreline development.
Well, that's, that's, that's in the policy five, that's a legacy. Okay, five.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm just wondering if that's why we put that. Clause in there about which regulations the county can enforce effectively versus ones that didn't enforce.
I think what we were getting at here is. That we need to enforce our shoreline development. In areas within our jurisdiction. In other words. You don't really have the ability. Let's, let's take state land, state land around lakes. Which I'm pretty familiar with. We, we, we don't, we can't enforce our setbacks, our shoreline. Development, correct, Jake?
On a downwind, we can't, correct.
Downwind, we can't.
Right.
Right. So that's, that's why, that's why this is in here. Implement shoreline, shoreline development land use regulations that address. Areas where the county can enforce such regulations effectively. The only, the only issue is whether or not areas is a little bit more ambiguous than within our jurisdiction. It seems to me to say the same thing.
And the state code says the comp plan applies to the area within your jurisdiction.
Okay.
It's already there.
All right, I'm just bringing it up.
Yeah, I, I. I, that's why I'm just saying that I don't think we need to be redundant.
All right, the other one they brought up, which I think is actually well taken. And that is a policy seven in natural resources. Uh, they, they, their comment was, it looks like we're addressing two different issues and I think they might be right. I think those sentences maybe should be. Should be separated.
I agree. So starting on productive farmland, that should be number eight, maybe?
Yes. Right. So can we make that change, Jake?
How do you?
Um. I'm looking through areas. I mean, I think of it. You know, let me just say that I think uh, the comments were thoughtful. And I appreciate them, but I, you know, I, I think you've, we've. Many of these things. Like the issue we just talked about with wetlands. You know, we talked about. For weeks and weeks of when we were doing the actual component, but I think the. Implementation component and so far, uh. Now is, is consistent with the components that have been adopted. Or the component that's been recommended, so. Any other discussion we want to have about the implementation? Component? Oh, wait a minute. Let's go back to uh, the one that. That Mr. Bowman. So I, I, you know, it seems to me that if we say. Something to the effect on, on land use, uh, policy number three. The commercial use, commercial industrial uses should be located and operated, blah, blah, blah. Wait a minute, that's number four. Commercial industrial uses. To have the concept in there that. And insofar as industrial uses are concerned, zoned industrial. Then they can be unconditionally permitted. It seemed to me that that's, that's, that's not a, it's not a stretch to add that. So I think that's what we meant.
Well, and, and this language here where, where we're saying. Uh, or the unconditionally or condition permitted. You know.
Well, four is unconditionally, five is conditionally.
Well, I, maybe, maybe, and areas not, well, five is an areas not identified. As mixed use.
That's the, there's a difference. Right, right, but, but again, I think, I think the concern on four is. That is, that I think would be solved if we say and zoned industrial.
I was going to say, it, it seems to me that. Um, the, the zoning ultimately should be more determinative of whether or not the use should be permitted conditionally or unconditionally. Rather, particularly since we've created land use designations that are mixed. Um.
Yeah.
And again, within, within, like I was saying with Dave, within the mixed use, I envision there will be industrial zones and commercial zones and suburban zone and so on. And, and the uses should be separated accordingly. And it's not obvious to me that if, you know, you're a commercial use in a commercial zone, that there should be a requirement for conditional permitting. The same for industrial and industrial zone.
So how about something that says that uh. Identified in comprehensive plan. And zoned as suitable. And zoned as suitable.
I like that.
Yeah, cause the way it's written, I mean theoretically. You, you would say, well, if the complaint says you can have commercial uses and excuse, land use designation. Wouldn't unconditionally in a suburban area, no, it's not what we, that's certainly not what we intended, I don't think. So I do think we need to clarify that.
So let's add, uh, so, so, uh, industrial. And suitably, uh, and suitably zoned. Identified comprehensive plan. And zoned as suitable.
Well, when we say commercial industrial uses should be unconditionally permitted. In. In there, in the areas where, in areas zoned for those uses.
And identified in the complaint.
Yeah.
Well. The way the sentence structure zoning comes in there and that implies that that's identified in the complaint, which is not. So.
Just reverse them to that.
Or some, as identified, commercial industrial uses. In areas identified in a comprehensive plan for mixed use development. Should be inappropriate.
And, and zoned for those uses.
Uh, yeah, somewhere right.
Somebody might argue that appropriate is not clear enough.
Good point, yeah.
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 So, um, maybe commercial industrial uses should be unconditionally permitted. In areas.
Zoned.
Identified in the comp plan. That are suitable for such development and zone for those uses and some, so you have to be both important.
Yeah, yeah, that's good.
You got that Jake, he's on it.
Right off the top of my head.
Yes, it's coming up right there on the screen. Suitably zoned. That's suitable and zone, okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, without, with those, uh.
Do we need? We need to do something. No, that's the, this, okay.
Okay. Next.
One, one question I had, Mr. Chairman, if I may, and forgive me if this is a stupid question, but that's my middle name, I guess. Um, I certainly don't want to reward anybody for submitting late stuff. But, um, the whole idea of getting rid of a lot of the shoulds and being a little bit more definitive in here. Um, I think was certainly appropriate. If the committee, if the rest of the commission not believe that that's appropriate.
Well, I, the, the history of this was. So we, we, we submitted an implementation plan in December of twenty twenty-two. Maybe November of twenty twenty-two, um, anyway, some, sometime before December of twenty twenty-two. And we had it worded more like what you're suggesting.
Yeah.
And the county commissioners changed it all to should.
Yeah, no, I, I know that history, but a lot has changed in the last three years or so, especially with those county commissioners.
You know, I, I, I think we gotta leave it the way it is until. They want to change it, they can change it.
Do, do we as a commission not think that that's important enough for us to make that change?
I mean, it's the plan, comprehensive plan is basically, you know, this is a plan, so the county should do these things. But they're not required to do these things.
But they are, in the sense of the argument. What Mr. Bowman suggested puts them into actionable items rather than maybes. You know, he just put the, put the operative word up front, just said. Uh, I, I gotta get.
And I don't even think he went so far as to state, this will be done, this shall be done, period dot the end, it's just a little bit more. It nudges the county away from so many shoulds and closer to. Shall's.
Yeah, for instance, under natural resources, the policies institute best management practices, not should be instituted. Design development standards should be, uh, design standards should be. Not should be, but design standards. That is the policy, in the policy statements, not. Maybes, so it was just, again, what we had before. But I appreciate the, uh, the suggestion, it's, uh.
The meaning hasn't, the meaning doesn't change, I mean, this, you know, it's.
It just makes it stronger.
Yeah.
Um, policy number five under that one, provide a copy. Of the legacyist. It's a do, just do it.
And in most cases, it's fewer words, which.
Yeah, which really helps, I like it.
Yeah, I, I, I actually like those edits.
Um, yeah, I, I do too, um.
I don't know if that would. I'm looking at Jake, if that would be something that would be substantive enough that we'd have to. Uh, do this over or not, but. I also recognize there's probably another chance for those edits to get put in place.
Uh, you guys can make your recommendation with edits without having to do an additional hearing. And even the board now can make substantive changes at their hearing without an additional hearing.
Right.
So that code change happened July of last year.
Yeah.
And we could make, so I understand that we can make changes at this hearing. As long as the board is going to have a hearing.
Yep, absolutely.
We could, whether they're material or not, you know, we can make changes. So if you want to adopt those edits, we can.
As we said earlier, we have to go through them one by one to see that not just carte blanche, adopt all of, uh, Mr. Bowman.
Well, if you bring it up maybe Jake, so we can look at, as I recall, there was really. Only one place where there was a real meaningful change, most of the rest, the vast majority, ninety-five plus percent was just, again. Changing the wording, but it certainly didn't change the meaning except for in one instance and. I apologize, I don't have my copy in front of me.
You can bring it up online, yeah.
Which, what do you want me to present, the current draft or Mr. Bowman's comments?
Mr. Bowman's comments.
Well, he's, he, he did a. Practice changes in work.
Yeah, um, so it's, uh, it's online, well, um, under today's date and so forth. One of the three sets of comments. Stopping at the top.
Those really don't change the meaning of.
No.
Anything there, keep scrolling down until. Unless somebody wants to stop sooner, I'll stop you when I see the area that I thought changed, potentially changed the meaning.
So basically, what we're talking about is anything where it brought the, the, uh, verb back to the beginning of the sentence. Took out the should, should consider the verb. Those are, are pretty much it. Uh, and keep going. Under population. I see it's just a verb change from hard to is, you know, in the goal, and that seems appropriate because the subject is a singular. Uh, but then the rest of them, it just brings the verb forward to the beginning of the sentence. Policies. And the same school facilities, I believe. And keep going, Jake. Same thing there. Right here is the one, I think he's got a comment in there, yeah. So he's saying it's redundant, so just eliminate it.
You're, you're referring to which ones we done, six and?
Well, under, uh, under economic development, yeah. You're saying that number four essentially is redundant.
With, with what? With what used to be seven.
Yeah.
Well, what the current, the current five or where, whatever. The, the last sentence disallow use if impacts currently mitigated, that's added, right?
Yeah, that's new.
That's new, that should be allowed.
I've seen several. Where we have a score, you say it's duplicative in, in which one?
Well, we had the seven.
You have, are you, do you have, does Dr. N open there?
Or you can look down.
Yeah, I have this one, yeah.
See his note to the right.
Or it says.
This policy is nearly identical to seven, now six, so I combined, damn it, and seven, now six. All that.
Policies. Yeah, so what's proposed as the new number four? Now, I sense just allow the use if impacts are not mitigated.
My suggestion was to take that out, so I, I, I think it's a. If, if there's identified potential impacts and they can't be. In any way, shape or form mitigated, then is the project going to get approved?
I don't know, which would be mandated, it'd be disallowed?
Yeah, uh, that's, that's a little, a little bit strong, so.
Well, and, and it says, you know, just allow the use, however, you know, but I'm. I'm assuming mitigate potential, these would be for initial use. Conditionally permitted, uh, yeah, C U Ps. Um, as well, we see this language. And instead of just allowing the use.
Because there are requirements to not allow light glare, sound smell, all that stuff. It's their requirements. So would it ever be to the case where it would? Somebody would argue, I don't have to, I mean, if they, they came back and said, no, I'm not gonna do those things.
There's a whole category of industrial uses where plainly says that there can be no.
Yeah.
Noise, glare, fumes, long list of things at the property line, zero, none.
So you'd have to show in your application that that's going to be achieved.
That's a whole category of industrial uses, the way the code is written right now, it's not all of the industrial uses, but. Many of them.
I suppose there's a case where an applicant comes in and the staff lays out what the code says. And then when the application is taken, it doesn't show that those things could be accomplished. So I don't know what happens then, maybe the director could inform us what would happen then. You know, if a, if an applicant proposes something, reads through the code, and then ultimately says, I'm not gonna do those things. Would this, would the staff recommend not taking that forward? Or would say, okay, we're gonna take your case to hearing and see what the commission or the board commissioners say. But it, that seems to be the, the play outs.
So if someone refuses to supply everything required in the application contents, is that what you're?
The problem I have with this is the language, the, because mitigate is, it's not a hundred percent thing, right? It's to make it less severe, I think, is the Webster's definition of mitigate.
Yeah.
So. Even just making it from a hundred to ninety-nine mitigated it, um, so, yeah, um. It's, it's a little bit, it's stated as though this is a black and white question.
Yeah.
Was it mitigated or was it not, and I'm not sure in most cases or many cases that it would be so black and white. And so I don't, but we're saying we're imposing this requirement if you left that language in. That treats it as if it is a black and white hundred percent sort of thing, so that, that's the reason I would. I would remove the sentence that they had added. I think the first part of it mitigate potential impacts, yada, yada, I think that's all great.
That's what you guys have currently written.
Yeah.
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 Yeah, I, I, I agree, we should take that sentence out.
Okay.
So did you agree to the changes that I already scrolled through? The, I know you guys said, I didn't hear a general consensus of agreement on the verbiage changes throughout the other policies.
Yeah, I think so.
Just, oh, I've moved the verb up front.
Okay.
I like that.
You know, I think.
I think it's, it reads better, it's clearer, it's.
And it, it does quite.
And it does make it a little bit more stronger.
I'm, I'm drafting the recommended update, so as, as I'm going through, I'm gonna start.
All right.
Pulling those over and I'll let you guys continue to deliberate on me, so.
I'm back to four again, I still can't, I can't see it in front of me and I have trouble seeing it up there on the screen, what was that redundant with, what are?
It, it's seven is crossed, right at the bottom of the screen.
I want you to go look at the previous step, though.
Yeah.
The last one, right there in the bottom of the screen.
It's still there.
Yeah, it's moving around, but.
Yeah, cause it talks about supporting local businesses, which is what the other part.
Okay, we're good with deleting it then? I am.
Yeah.
I think it is clearly redundant.
I, I agree.
I agree.
Okay.
Um, the land use, we've already dealt with, uh, number four.
I, yes, and the rest of them, a few that there are, it's again, it's moving the.
Everything else is good, this was the only place that I was thinking of that had any kind of meaning changed first to discuss, right?
Well, let's go through it and see.
Yeah. So seven, we spent significant time on this relative to sanitary. Uh, um, under land use policies. Relative to sanitary services. Cause where we had it, all end use applications should first be reviewed, evaluated and or approved. Knowing that it's according to the type of review that's given by Panhandle Health, it's not, you know, a preliminary site evaluation is not, quote, approval. It's an initial step that says, okay, now propose a design and so forth, so.
Right, yeah, cause approval and evaluation are two separate.
Yeah, yeah, so i- it, it's, i- in this sense, I think it's, it's too strong to strike the or. Um, I agree, it's still, it puts it in front, it's rather than should be. Are to be reviewed, evaluated and or approved.
I've, I've been wondering, as we've been talking about these over the last few weeks, should we be very explicit? Should we say we want a preliminary site evaluation? Or whatever other terms would be appropriate.
Since this calls for the review, that means it goes to Panhandle, so let them figure out what's appropriate, they may want to go right to approve.
I mean, that's, that's kind of their language, is a preliminary side of.
Yeah.
Approval if you actually go for the full permit.
Right, true, but this is, I mean, there are some that do that, because it's just so essentially black and white, you can do it. This was installed.
I, I, I know, um, well, okay, yeah, that's, right, yeah.
A- anyway, uh, uh, we tried to defer to, uh, what they were saying for Panhandle, the last two or three meetings. And I think we crafted this language based on that, so. Um.
I can live with it the way it is, but I, I do have this thought that maybe it should be just. Lightly explicit about what we're, what we're asking Panhandle Health to do in that, at that time. Which I think is a preliminary side of it, in their terminology.
Yeah. I know, yeah, I.
I don't know.
Without Catherine here to.
And there's the promise of, well, maybe a lot of different cases that have to be considered and made different.
I wasn't, wasn't all, it wasn't all that clear to me.
Tiny bit.
I certainly talked about preliminary side evaluations, but. Wasn't clearly clear to me.
Is this?
That's, that's the only tool I have.
This is both.
That's why I would, I would think we just keep the language.
Yeah, it's open it up, but not restricted, so.
That's for sure, Catherine's online with her hand as well.
Oh, she is, okay, since she's a sub- subject matter expert.
Catherine, you have some, uh, words of wisdom?
Yeah, uh, hi guys, um, I'm not sure, right now I can't exactly see on the screen where you were referring to. Which, which language are you looking at?
That's under land use, uh, policy number seven.
Okay, so. Is the screen, um, let's see, I don't have it.
Not up there.
Right now, on that Zoom meeting, I see policies and I can see up to number six.
Right, so there we go.
Here we go, okay, there we go.
Number seven.
Okay, so, um. So you're, you, um, I was hearing what you were just saying, but you're saying all land use applications are to be. What you're suggesting is potentially put, um, have an initial site evaluation or. Um, basically, that's your question, whether you want to be more explicit with what you're actually looking for, um.
Right, or is the language there, including.
Yeah.
Breakdown replacement, is that sufficient, keeping the or, the and or approved? Approved. Is that sufficient and appropriate?
See, all land use.
And my concern was I, you know, I you may have some other tools besides a. Preliminary site evaluation.
That was exactly my concern, because I would hate to kind of. Make it so narrow that it doesn't apply to something that might change over time on our end in terms of application options. So I do think the all land use applications are to be reviewed, evaluated and approved.
And or.
And right now you have the or. Crossed off, but you're think.
Right.
You're thinking of maybe putting that back in?
Yes, well, it was never taken out, that was. That was.
Okay.
That was one of our. One of our citizens and it's.
Okay.
She's just.
Um.
Yeah, you know.
Yeah.
We're thinking this was, think of this was all.
I definitely think, um. Reviewed, evaluated and approved makes. The most sense to me, um. It's just what that would mean could be a different type of document each time, depending what they're doing on our end. But it would still be some type of approval. I would, I don't think, I wouldn't necessarily recommend using a language of a preliminary soil analysis necessarily, because. We have that, we have speculative, we have several options, and we, I think it makes sense to. Keep that a little open, so when they're working with us, we can figure it out what makes sense for them. But the review evaluated and. Approved. Makes sense to me, I I don't know what value the or would necessarily have.
I think our concern was that you might evaluate something, but not necessarily formally approve it.
Right, where it's more of a staged review and approval process.
Well, yeah, you know, I'm thinking the sanitary restriction with Catherine.
Uh huh.
Doing that, you know, you're doing that preliminary, uh, source study.
Uh huh.
It's not necessarily an approval. By Panhandle, right? Uh, but it's enough to go ahead and do the sanitary restriction lift.
Well, it wouldn't be, though, we would never lift sanitary restrictions unless someone did actually lift them, which wouldn't happen at the preliminary analysis, they would have to. Work through the process, though, that we had all the information where we could actually lift them. So when you're when you're speaking about land use applications and you're discussing the potential of creating new parcels. And we want to ensure that we're not. I I'm, the way I'm understanding it from some of the prior recent conversations were that. We don't, you know, we want to potentially. Avoid making a bunch of lots that aren't. Quote unquote buildable. Which means they would need to have a means of sanitary services. Which means the sanitary lift. And we would only do that once we actually approved it, so. Um, yes, it would be like someone could do a staged review. With the preliminary, but the actual, if this is to create new land, if this is for land. Splitting. It makes sense to have it. Um, require that approval. Because, um. That's the whole intent of the sanitary lift.
Can I just leave it as and?
Just and?
So the way this reads right now, we are talking really about land divisions, and this is land use applications, which would be anything applied for under Title twelve to include like a home occupation permit. Or a.
Yeah.
A vacation rental permit, or, you know, some really.
Okay.
That, so if we're talking specific about land divisions, we we should probably update that to land divisions. Versus all land use application, but there are some land use applications where it does make a lot of sense, you know, there's some.
BAC look at and say, yep.
Initial use permits in a, you know, for a commercial use, um, that is gonna be more intensive that, you know, the the current. Um, subsurface sewage, you know, permit isn't gonna be sufficient, right?
Pure definition. Zone change.
Mm hmm.
In that case, then the and or does make a lot more sense.
That's where I think. Because we were always considering all the various types of land uses, that's where the and or came in.
I was just thinking like a home occupation permit for an attorney with an office, right? Do we really need PhD to get involved with that decision making? Uh, maybe they do, I don't know, so, but when you have an open broad as all land use applications, so something to consider.
Okay, so what should we, what should we? Seems to me it should be broader than land used. Land, land use divisions.
Yeah, um.
So in that case, we need to leave the and or, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um. And the other way to address it would be to. Be more specific about different types of applications, but that quickly. Goes down, right?
And at this level, I mean, that stuff's handled. At nauseam, when you get into the specific.
It should be.
Code, yeah.
And the code specifies what things.
Yeah.
Need to have Panhandle review and not, so. All right, so should we just add divisions? With applications?
I wouldn't even do that, just leave it as is and leave the or in there. And just, you know, consider.
Let the code. Do you consider? Submission for a land division as an application?
Yeah, 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 anything under Title twelve, right, so it goes from.
You know, a four hundred lot subdivision down to.
So we've.
A yoga studio, right, through a home on, so.
So this, again, this is one of those things where the code is going to take care of the specificity. Where the complaint, if you try to put it in here, it's gonna get complicated and. And maybe. Not facilitate the code change.
We could, we, you could change that to, um, well. So you could specify to say land divisions and conditional use permits for commercial industrial uses or something like that, but. I don't know if that's too specific or. I'm not sure.
Okay, even what if it's, doesn't have to necessarily be a conditionally used, could be a permitted use, that may be for commercial or industrial that still needs Panhandle review, so. I think that's the danger here. Of trying to be specific and inadvertently leaving something out, I I think it's better that we address the specificity of the code.
Okay.
There's much of that.
Yeah, well, that might also be why we wouldn't go say R to be, you should leave the language should be. Made it first, take first out, should be, if you.
Yeah, I can see that.
At least there's some discretion there.
So that's, that I guess is an interesting question, are there? Going to be land use applications where we would decide there is no need for Panhandle Health review?
And would that go against the complaint, like?
Yeah.
I think in your review of take one vacation rental permits, I think it was decided through that that they would not need to be reviewed before issuance, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We'll be looking back to our analysis of that and the change.
Their existing structures, so. They have what they have.
Yep. So that, I'm I I'm sure there are others, as we go through the other use tables, they're like, oh, yeah, this really doesn't make sense. Um. Um, where others where it would make total sense to have a PhD, right?
You should leave the should in there.
Yeah, take like a duplex in the rec zone is conditionally permitted right now. Um, of course, that's gonna need a review from PhD.
Right, so we're back to leaving it the way it is. Pretty much.
Yeah, all right.
I see that.
I start grand, take out the word. First.
Well, in our discussion there, what I mentioned was having them go to. Panhandle and start the process. As they make an application, not wait till later and then be informed, oh, don't forget, you gotta go to Panhandle. So that's where we put the first in.
I don't know, to me, it's unclear. Before what, first before what? It's not clear what it means.
Now. Should first be. Uh. All land use applications. Need to be supported by a review, evaluation and or approval by the appropriate state agency for sanitary services.
That would be right.
Yeah, that's a great point.
Jake, did you get that?
Don't yell, right? Don't ask me what I just said.
Did you say crap and rewrap me so quick, I don't, I don't write it all.
I know, I don't, that was right off the top of my head, too, so. All land use applications. Uh, shoot.
You use the word need.
Should be supported by.
Should be supported by. Yes, thank you. You remember better than I.
Should be supported by what?
Should be supported by. Um. A. Review and evaluation and or an approval by the appropriate state agency for sanitary services. In other words, go first. Start the process with the appropriate agency. Then make your applications as part of the application and you're aware of it. That was a lot of our discussion was that people are coming in late, and what do I need that for?
Do you? Where's that from?
Okay.
What land use application should be supported by a review, evaluation or approval, by the applicable state we can see for sanitary services?
Should be or need to be. Should be, so.
It may basically means the same thing, that's what we're talking here.
Yeah. Yeah. No, your mom says you need to do this. Should I do it, Mom? Oh, sure, go ahead, Sonny.
Okay.
No, you don't have to.
All right, moving on.
Um, number eight. Um, the way with Dave's changes, I think we need to strike it in the second line.
Oh, yes, I was at that too, yeah. Good catch. Through zoning and subdivision laws. Cause it it referred back to the county, the county.
When he struck out.
Yes, yeah. Thank you, big pass. Yeah, all right, he's not telling. He's not telling.
About nine.
I don't like all the space between eight and nine, for one thing.
Oh.
Number nine gets kind of lost.
There was a suggestion, there was a suggestion by, from the cap, remember who?
That would not create any.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, then you go back to that discussion, you know, was it Ben Arsh, you're showing Danny where they actually could be. The the need for grants.
Or, yeah.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, that was my concern, is that we.
Yeah, there are certain laws that don't. Right, they're not gonna be able to, right?
Right, so we'll leave that the way it is. Ten, just a grammatical.
Yeah.
In a bowl, it was grammatical.
Okay, so all the way through. I think what. They did when land use. Correct me if I'm wrong, you made it hyphenated. Land hyphen use. Instead of just two words, land use, and. It's a term. What do you call land use?
Where are you, where are you?
Like in in thirteen. It probably occurred elsewhere, but I pick it up in thirteen, because it's twice in there. If you see. It's.
Oh, the hyphen?
Yeah, land hyphen use, not just two words, land use. Because it's a term.
I was gonna say, is that one of those terms that probably is correct, but we'd have to go back and change every other document?
I know.
Here and there throughout. The planning documents the county has, sometimes it is.
Yeah, it's like the capitalization thing, it's sometimes, yes, sometimes no.
So why change it?
I I I don't think it's misunderstood if it said land use rather than land hyphen use. Tomatoes, tomatoes. Potatoes.
All right, we done with that, so we're going down to natural resources? I don't know what actively seeking is, we give them notice, is that actively seeking?
I guess it would qualify. If we read agency comments, we must have solicited them. We must have actually actively sought them.
But as I recall, we had a lot of agency comments on natural resources.
Actually.
In fact. My recollection is that certain portions of the natural resources component. Were written by Idaho Fish and Game.
Yes, they will. We asked them to help and they did.
I'm just not sure what actively seek means, if it means something other than giving them notice. We certainly did that, we invited them to our meetings. Yeah. I guess we could, we could. What do you think?
Think it changes much, really?
It it's one of those terms that. It's open to interpretation. Maybe we should just say seek.
And why don't we say seek?
To leave the active.
Just actively acknowledge and consider.
Different people could debate. Have you done enough?
Yeah. Yeah, because we had that comment a lot, you know, we sent them a request review and they didn't do it, did you actively, did you call them up, love them? You know, even Lucy. Squeaky wheel? No.
Well, I think what we did with natural resources. Could qualify as actively seeking.
Well, true, it is definite. But I mean, this, this is during the whole process of applications and such, so. That was confident.
All right, so.
Rest are policies.
I don't know.
Okay. Policy number three and substantive.
No, it kind of creates a strange. Sense, Andy.
Yeah, I noted that as well, just it's missing a word or something. But, um. So say recognize its critical wildlife habitats. And create development. Standards to protect and mitigate development impacts. On these areas. Um. That whole discussion of wildlife habitats.
I remember talking about critical.
Well, even critical. Well, that's. The only critical wildlife habitat listed is the lake. But. Most people in areas don't agree. That's the Voltron habitat. So I, I don't know, that's. Because. Mitigate development impacts. And. Principles correct. The operation of it. Make it extremely difficult.
Do you wanna make any change, or do you wanna? Do you wanna? Live with the findings? I'm leaving the findings.
Or just, just, just say, bring the, bring the, the. Conditional upfront, or just say, so recognize as critical wildlife habitats such as they are.
We didn't change it.
And, uh. Oh, yeah, recognize critical wildlife habitats. And create development standards to protect these areas.
That counts for me, really.
Oh, right. And we, we, you know, we had in there and mitigate development impacts. But.
Oh, they just just change it around.
Yeah.
Uh, I have to go. I like we need to kind of move it back to the hot attacks better than mitigating the impact in here, it's.
On these habitats.
It seems a little. More specific.
Yeah, because we'd ever, it doesn't mention areas or previously in the sense. It implies it's the wildlife habitat. But why not just say and mitigate development impacts on these wildlife habitats, on these habitats?
So let's just, let's leave it the way it's planned this. Except for the recognition. Start with recognizing, leave it the way. We had it drafted.
All right.
Yeah.
Because it says.
All right, moving right along, guys.
So the next one, short of the capitalization. Is a, bring the, bring the verb up front. And. Yeah.
We just have this somewhere else?
Well, we talked about it earlier, uh. Like, we get the context, but. Uh, it must have been.
Well, I just.
Jennifer mentioned the two, so. About. Making sure that the shoreline regulations are enforced. Which has always been one of our discussions about.
I think, I think it was in land use. And this is after a little.
Yeah, that's exactly right, Helen.
Oh, there. So, I mean, we can, we can keep it in both, both. Both components.
So just go with his change? His grammatical.
Sure, yeah.
So here's the wetland again. This is, well, it's on a natural resource. This one we discussed. So does this changed language agree with what we said earlier? So does this changed language agree with what we said earlier discussing this policy?
Trying to figure out what we said before.
We decided to stick with Clean Water Act as the defining.
Right.
Standard. And that doesn't change anything here. And it's generic enough, protect delineated wetlands. Yeah. Identify and protect productive farmlands. So that's where I had an issue, identify and protect the identified, identify productive farmlands, jungle lands and mining lands. Oh. I I think. Through GIS and maybe some other, maybe through the assessor's office, some of that identification can be done. And granted, this is a long term.
First of all, this is, this is one where. There's two different thoughts here. This was one that we're gonna separate. The two sentence wetlands and yeah.
Yes.
One deals with wetlands, others.
I would leave exactly the same because it says exactly the same thing as it did.
Yeah, you have, you have a policy.
Oh, that's right. We added policy eight, which.
We're doing the same thing here, so too.
Policy eight would.
Well, Mr. Bowman drop, I have like your guys working.
Oh.
You want me to present bold, I can, it just makes this one possible.
Oh, you're right.
So the second sentence, the way we had reading was productive farmland, timberland and mining land should be identified and protected from adverse effects of adjoining developments. And you kind of change it around. Well, identify, protect productive farmland, timberland and mining lands from adverse effect of neighboring developments.
Is that essentially what number eight read?
Yep.
Yeah. I think that is number eight, so it's already been addressed.
I think the biggest change here that I saw was the changing adjoining to neighboring.
Right.
Everything else is the same.
Neighboring again, that's a. What's that mean? A bit of a subjective word.
Well, adjoining is actually defined in item of statute.
Yeah.
Let's leave it, let's leave it at joinings.
Yeah, I I think so.
Okay.
Any hazardous areas?
These are mostly just bring the verb forward.
Yep.
I s- I think I searched to see if there is a Bonner County policy on wildland urban interface. And I don't believe there is.
I couldn't find one either.
There's a, there's a wildfire. Uh, under a couple things that the commissioners have put in place. But I don't think we have a wildland urban interface policy. Number one, all of our fire departments have said the whole Glutman Counties wildland fire. Uh, there's no interface, interface implies change from one to the other, maybe. He said even at the boundaries of the cities, it's still because of vegetation. There is no, there is no interface. In that sense. So. And that was our wording, we put that in there before because it was the. The expression of the day kind of thing. But. There is a wildland fire policy.
So your, your.
How do you change?
Concern is while the inter- urban interface?
Yeah, it's an undefined, it's not, there is no, there is no W U I policy that Bonner County has.
All right, so then we'll take that out, we'll just say counties wildland fire. Policies.
And plans.
Plans should be integrated or. Uh, if you're switching around, integrate counties well, wildland.
Yeah, you could do that, yeah.
And policies.
Right.
Just take out while on urban interface.
Yeah.
And we could leave it the way that. It's been.
Yep, suggested. So number five, again, it's another identifying. And we do have the. Much more reliable and defined slope analysis tool. GIS with the.
Yeah, so after we just visit that, do we want to just change the language around like suggested or not? I don't think there's a change in meaning here.
No, that's just to bring it forward. All right, so number six. The only change there was um, you're adding. Lower density zoning. Within these areas. Which is what it amounts to, just saying lower densities, lower density what? It just clarifies, clarifies it.
All right, number, so we can do that, we can add that. Yeah. I'm not sure why. Having jurisdiction was capitalized.
Remember, are you on seven? There's still, it is a term in the part of the.
Having jurisdiction is a term?
Authority having jurisdiction. Yeah.
Just like the.
Okay.
Fire authority having jurisdiction. F A, F F A H G.
Discourage, okay, eight, number eight, it's fine.
Yeah.
Public services.
Jake, can you scroll down to public services?
Still.
I don't, I don't have any hard burn with, with that number two.
Number two cumulative impact? It's, it's, it's extremely subjective, it's not defined, as Dave says, not defined, but neither is impact for that matter. Why, but cumulative impacts, oh my goodness.
Consideration cumulative impact, I think that's probably a good idea.
It's a great idea. EPA struggled with this for a decade. And they finally came out, and this is years ago, and I'm not up to date on it, but years ago, they came out with a rule. That said, look into it, but we're not gonna attach any conditions relative to cumulative impacts in your approval. But they're on notice so that the jurisdictions can possibly see what's coming.
This, all this says is with consideration of cumulative impacts.
Yeah, well. I I I require with consideration. It's a, it's a.
Well, we can, we can take it out. We're gonna move through this.
Yeah, I, I mean, the question is rolling around in my head is, are. How is any one of these agencies gonna actually look ahead and think about cumulative impact? I'd love to. Once, once the impact has happened, you're sort of not talking about disbelief anymore. And that's the whole point of it, in my mind, is to look at.
It's something that I, I, I'm not, I'm not completely, I'm not completely up to date on the, on NEPA, but I would suspect that NEPA probably deals with cumulative impacts.
Like I just said, as far as I know, that's the rule that they came out with because it was a huge discussion ten, fifteen years ago.
But that's specific to.
Right, and, and.
Federal, federal nexus.
But as a, as a pattern, as a, as a.
All right, well, let's not, let's, let's take this out.
It is something that.
We haven't, we haven't, it's not, it's, it's. Recognized here, it's not in the component, so let's take it out.
Yeah.
See comments, okay?
See comments. Provide adequate. Require that. Yeah, equally served by fire protection, blah, 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 blah. Require developers to provide. Again, these are policies, these are. Require adequate provision for future use. Yeah, which just brings the verbs forward. I think we should give it a try again.
Well, this is the public service facility and utilities. Implement, so if, if it's. By leaving up that utility providers language in there.
Well, I mean, thinking back to the Northern Lights comment, that's, that's what they said pretty much.
Well, I'm not sure why.
Wait, this is our language.
This is our language, we didn't have. We had in there of the utility providers to serve current users. I think that should stay.
Yeah, that's, that's where it is now.
Oh, I see, I see.
Yes, that should stay.
All right, that should stay, Jake.
Number two.
Three. Should pass fine. I don't know that we can do in the report. I think we should leave it the way we have it.
Yeah, that, I mean, that's kind of a hard. To make sure that they all.
I mean, how can, how can we require that they, that the school service in the, in the.
Or is this any different from the other one where we talked about? Getting, seeking review from those to say what the impacts are that need to be addressed?
I think we just leave it the way it was. New development should.
Should.
Be adequately served. It's a statement that should be. I don't know, we can require all of this things.
Handle it in code later.
Where developers, so number five. Okay, I'll be eliminated, but. Six, six is okay. In six, we can make a edit.
Transportation. That's essentially what is done, number one. Now, moving forward.
Number three.
There's two number twos. There is.
We probably ought to have. I'll change that to number three.
He gets all the numbers forward, but. That's all our language, so it must have been three, four before.
With the original had two twos in it as well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Ah, you overlooked the mistake.
I think number two is a bit, a bit too strong.
Which two, the first two or the second?
Second number two, I, I agree, we should, we should leave it the way we have it. And I think the same with number three.
Yeah, because the uh.
Current number three, I guess will be number four.
Yeah, these aren't bringing verbs forward, these are adding verbs.
Right, I think we need to leave them the way we have them. Take the requires out. Restrictor require, require.
Yeah, number four. So if it's left, it should, so the fire district comments on it and says. Due to the whatever, the length of this dragway, the length of the road, the condition, the slope, anything. We recommend that it be built to twenty foot standard, dah, 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 dah. Then the county considers that. And. They fall under that.
I think there, there would be. Condition three, the three here are now three, four, five. We need to leave it the way we have it.
Gives the open doors for the agencies to comment and.
For six is, is fine, we'll put encourage plus or minus. Number eight is fine, considering. Render recreation. Number one is fine. Number three is. Is just changing. The verb to the front. Any special areas? You know, those are all fine.
Housing.
Do you guys agree to everything in the recreation?
Yeah.
Yeah, and which one?
And special.
Oh, recreation.
Yeah, I think it's appropriate to add natural resources to the goal.
Housing, number two, um, there's, there's a suggestion to add in areas appropriate for their level of density.
Sites. Over halfway down the alley, long dance, professional sites was in it.
Yes.
Hey, can you go down to housing, please?
Yeah, okay, I see the rationale for adding that.
Number three is okay, um. Yep. Yeah, the number four, that, that, this, this is, this changes the meanings, it says, you know, ours was that we can recognize the opportunities should be made for instant livings. I don't know how we provide opportunities.
Yeah, that was, there's a couple provides in here that are questionable.
Well, I would leave that with the way we have it.
Even the goal itself for like whole environment. Does that mean?
Well, it's in, you're providing an environment. Not, not providing, but it actually happened. But so, and in this context of land use regulation, you're providing. A regulatory environment that enables opportunities for.
So there are means to get there.
Yeah.
So you think provides, okay?
I think in the goal, yes. It, it, uh. Number four policies, no, I think that goes a little bit too far.
Right, yeah.
Well, yeah, opportunities for assistance.
Provide opportunities, well, again, provide opportunities, that's.
That's different than an environmental, a regulatory environment does.
That's almost a second uh goal. Because that's pretty much what the first goal says. Provide, not provide the environment, provide the opportunity.
Should we say regulatory environment in, in the goal?
Hey.
Just so we're clear what that means.
Yeah.
And that's the way I, when we wrote that, that's what I felt we were saying. It's just me.
And environment is a big word.
Yeah, so I was just.
Regulatory.
But this is all about land use regulation, right?
Right, right.
So you always have to go back and think about. What are we doing here in the first place? And, and so that was the context, that's the way I read it. I, I think it helps to say provide a regulatory environment that enables opportunities for the rest of.
Okay.
So there's number four, if that says it that way in the, in the goal.
And to me, I.
Are we reiterating it in, in policy four?
Yeah, I, I think, I think, I don't think. No problem to do that.
Okay.
I mean, that's. They're gonna evaluate, you're gonna evaluate different proposals.
Right.
Against the policies, so.
Well, maybe even there, evaluate proposals for assisted living and group challenge.
What does that mean, evaluate?
That seems to change the meaning.
Yeah. Where, where'd you see evaluate?
I just stuck that in, suggesting.
No. Sorry.
Number five, enable versus allow. Those are pretty big.
That's a lot, is pretty unconditional. Yeah, we'd, I'd leave it the way we have it.
Even, even though enabled. It's kind of wide open too, but.
Allow is too strong the other way. It is in my opinion.
Yeah, yeah, so it's a little enable.
All right, community design.
Yeah, rather than the county should, which enact the owner's standards. People, all areas for some of themselves.
The only one I have an issue with is number five. I think we leave it the way we have it. Yeah, it it seems more appropriate. All right.
That's it.
That's it.
Oh, okay. We got, we we'll be on page sixteen to sixteen, we're now seventeen to sixteen. Love it.
That's where the second number two goes.
Microsoft.
Oh, yeah.
No, we're not at.
This was the whole, hey, very large.
I think productive is more is more restricted than very large.
It is, it is, it's more, it's broader, so it just, you know, how do you, how do you sculpt it down? Which.
Well, it can see we used to have, I can't remember some land use. Part of it, they they use the term, you know, for productive, they use a viable and feasible. And and these, and of course, we don't define those, and you go to Webster, but those that viable and feasible means that it's gonna be able to make a profit at some cost. And so when we just, when we take out, when we just go ahead and do productive agricultural lands. Um, yeah, I wish Peter was here to verify this, cause but I know this from experience. You know, you can throw a lot of money into the legislature and irrigation expenses and stuff into a piece properly, and you're very, very.
Actually, I would say, I think we ought to change this to say fragmentation of a large. Agricultural lands, take out productive.
You don't have a large, large land.
Agricultural lands?
That's good, that's.
Yeah.
And again, I mean, acreages, yeah, what is large and what is lands? Agricultural acreage?
Bigger than small. I I give you, we should put productive in there, I think that's a problem.
Yeah, we're gonna have endless debates about what's productive or not.
We've already, we've already seen that.
I grew a radish this year of the.
Scourge fragmentation of.
I don't know how else to say it. I know.
We'll leave it that way. Scourge fragmentation of. What say you, Mr. Davis?
Of lanes.
What is our agriculture component? What is our agriculture component?
Yeah, I was gonna try to bring that up, but. Yeah, I was gonna try to bring that up, but.
Direct, I guess I'm okay with Alan's suggestion. Direct, I guess I'm okay with Alan's suggestion. You may interrupt it, or to say large. You may interrupt it, or to say large.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It, and you know, again, it's an area that'll have to be clarified. It, and you know, again, it's an area that'll have to be clarified.
That's the intent, and I I know, I think. That's the intent, and I I know, I think. All right, so while John's looking that up, we'll go through. All right, so while John's looking that up, we'll go through. I think the others are. I think the others are. Are just dramatical changes. Are just dramatical changes. So everybody's okay with large agricultural lands. We'll leave it that way. What say you, Mr. Davis?
Yeah, just looking, I'm looking at the component that was approved. And none of the subareas. Dealt with those words, large or production and so forth, they all talked about it, but it never came down to those words, so. So.
No, it's not there.
All right, so we've gone through this. Are we prepared for a motion to approve this as amended? Um, if so.
You.
I don't know if you have. You know, Jake has it all put together, we'll not receive before we make the motion or something.
I'm like seventy percent, okay.
All right.
What was time you need for the other thirty?
This might be a little out of the norm, but what you could do is. Um, continue this until after the next hearing and have that hearing and then reopen this up and let me present.
All right. So we'll do, we can see it clear and clean. Yeah, that'd be a great idea.
Oh, shoot.
Okay.
All right, I lost my place.
So we're in the midst of a public hearing on this amendment.
All right, we're gonna continue um this public hearing until after consideration.
We need a motion of the.
And we have a motion to continue this hearing to the act after consideration of. File AM zero 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 two dash twenty five.
Second. I don't know who made the motion.
Nobody made the motion.
Can we, we um. Continue this hearing until after whatever the next hearing. You guys twenty five.
All right.
In a second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
All right, so now we're gonna move to. Public hearing on file AM zero 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 two dash twenty five text amendment, Bonner County revised code title point.
Okay, thank you commissioners, Alex Fan, planning staff, so. Today we're going to hear file AM zero 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 two dash twenty five, a title twelve text amendment. Um, specifically, this is an amendment for um B C R C twelve dash three, 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 the commercial use table. Uh regarding recreational vehicle parks and campgrounds in the um rural. Agricultural forestry and rural service centers. So these are the applicable standards at which this application was reviewed against. This was published in the Daily Bee on May eighth, twenty twenty five, and the notice of public hearing. Was sent to the agencies or to public agencies on May sixth, twenty twenty five. So this is the proposed code amendment to B C R C twelve dash three, three, three. Um, as you can see, it removes um. The recreational vehicle park and campground uses from the agricultural forestry rural and rural service center districts. And uh the proposal is to prohibit them in those uh zoning districts. So this uh code amendment was directed by the uh Board of County Commissioners to planning staff to initiate this. Uh amendment to remove the recreational vehicle parks and. Campgrounds as a conditional use in the rural agricultural forestry and rural service center zoning districts. The board cited several concerns, including uh strain on already limited infrastructure in these areas. Potential increases in density that may conflict with the character of lower density zones. And inconsistencies with goals and policies of the county's comprehensive plan. So uh according to the uh AM zero 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 seven dash nineteen. Staff report, this was the proposal that led to the current code that we have now. Uh, the original intent of allowing this use in the agricultural forestry and rural. And suburban zones was to address growing demand for recreational opportunities in the county. So the report stated that as recreation in the county continues to increase, there are more demands for RV parks and campgrounds. This proposal establishes a conditional use permit process which anal, and excuse me, analyzes. The project to the proposed standards C U P slash P U D standards and requires a public hearing with the planning commission. And allows for comment from surrounding neighbors and potentially impacted agencies. Um, it is worth noting that the RV park and campgrounds were already a conditional use in the rural service center zone prior to the twenty nineteen amendment. Um, and again, that added um that use in the AF rural and suburban zones. The notice was sent out to public agencies and political subdivisions in accordance with twelve dash two, six, eight, and Idaho Code sixty seven, sixty five, oh nine. Benix A shows a complete agency notification list. Uh, the following agencies replied with a comment, we received one comment from Spirit Lake Fire Protection District. And that is in your, that should be in your packet today. Uh, we received no comment replies from Idaho Department of Fish and Game, Idaho D E Q, and Idaho Transportation Department. Um, and we have seen, we have received public comments on this file, which are also included in your packet today. So to get into the comprehensive plan analysis, the first one is property rights. Though the um. Um, policies that are currently in place for the comprehensive plan. Uh, Bonner County should follow the Attorney General's checklist prescribed at Idaho Code sixty seven, eighty, oh, three. And provided in the property rights component of the county's comprehensive plan for all land use decisions. For all land use decisions, findings of fact and conclusions of law should be adopted that reflect the justifications for exactions. Conditions and restrictions and should confirm that take a taking of private property has not occurred. Uh, the private right or the property rights of the applicant adjoining and nearby landowners and future generations should be considered. As well as the short term and long term consequences of decisions. Bonner County should review all rezoning rec, uh requests, downzoning and upzoning pursuant to the Idaho State Code Title sixty seven, six, chapter sixty five, Local Land Use Planning Act. The approval of conditional rezoning or denial of a request for rezoning may be subject to the regulatory. Uh, taking analysis provided in Idaho Code Section sixty seven, eighty, oh, three. This is the staff analysis, so the application was noticed in the newspaper on May eighth, twenty twenty five, and public agencies and taxing districts were notified of this request on May sixth. Currently, RV parks and campgrounds are conditionally permitted in each zone except for the forestry forty and industrial zones. Uh, where they prohibit, where they are prohibited prohibited entirely. The proposed commo code amendment would remove RV parks and campgrounds as a conditional use from the rural agricultural forestry and rural service center zoning districts. Which constitute approximately forty six point four percent of the land in Bonner County, according to the Bonner County Land Use Analysis Tool. This change would restrict the RV parks and campground use to the higher density zoning districts of suburban, recreation, commercial, and Alpine Village. In the short term, this amendment could uh reduce potential subsurface sewage treatment con- concentration in the rural and agricultural forestry zoning districts. Where water and sewer districts are often absent. It may also mitigate potential burdens on wells and removing the uh use in the areas that could have less developed infrastructure. However, in the long term, limiting RV parks and campgrounds to higher density zoning districts could place a greater strain on these areas. Hmm, excuse me. Um, potential impacts include a potential rise in fire risk due to concentrated. Development, increased subso- subsurface sewage in limited areas. Greater demand on aquifers and water sources, further density increases in areas with potentially limited urban water and sewer infrastructure. And a potential increase in ruin maintenance costs for the county. Next is the population component, uh population projections should be analyzed regularly to determine if changes need to be made to the comprehensive plan goals. Objectives and policies and or the zoning ordinance to ensure that the public and community needs are being met through land use decisions. Population forecasts and census data should be used to evaluate housing and school needs. And impacts to the transportation system and other county services. Bonner County should cooper cooperate with its incorporated cities and neighboring counties to address growth challenges. Within the A C I areas and coordinate planning efforts whenever possible. So the staff analysis, the uh Bonner County experienced a population increase. Of nine point one percent between the twenty twenty census and the twenty twenty two population estimates. Rising from forty seven thousand one hundred and five to fifty one thousand four hundred and forty one. The population growth has contributed to an increased demand for housing throughout the county, but including. Both incorporated and unincorporated areas. The proposed code amendment would locate RV parks and campgrounds within higher density zoning districts such as suburban, recreation, commercial, and Alpine Village. This could have implications for housing availability in these zones, potentially affecting a larger number of people. The placement of RV parks and campgrounds in these higher density areas often situated in or around areas of city impact. Um, designated for potential annexation uh by nearby cities may influence the growth. Of these cities and the availability of diverse housing options for county and city residents. According to Bonner County Revised Code twelve dash three, 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 RV parks, camp and campgrounds are classified as a commercial use. While B C R C twelve dash three, three, two residential use table. Permits RV dwelling units as alternatives to single family and accessory dwelling units. RV parks and campgrounds are generally intended uh for short term occupancy as defined by Idaho Code sixty three, eighteen, oh, three, uh, four. And sixty seven, sixty five, thirty nine, as thirty days or less, which also affirms local jurisdictions authority to regulate land uses. School facilities and transportation, uh current data regarding school capacity and transportation issues. Uh, as provided by the school districts will be included in the assessment of all land use proposals. And Bonner County should examine the impacts of land use proposals to the school system and should seek mitigation from developers such as providing facilities, safety features. And fees, uh fees or other measures as permitted by Idaho Code to address the impact of the proposals. We did not receive um any comment from the Lake Ponty School District nor from their Transportation Department. Um, on how this code amendment would or would not adversely affect um. The district and their uh any impact to the district's ability to provide adequate. School services and facilities for new and existing students. Um, the Transportation Department did not provide a comment as well, and this code amendment does not appear to conflict with this component. Economic development, small scale cottage businesses and home occupation should be allowed in all areas of the county. Reasonable conditions on such uses should be set to minimize adverse impacts to the neighborhood. Based on factors including but not limited to hours of operation and traffic volume generated by the business. Develop land use regulations to allow Bonner County's agricultural heritage to be maintained by enabling. Local food production, distribution, congregation, and retail sales. Um, examples include community gardens, school gardens, farm related education programs, farmers or public markets. And other small scale collaborative initiative uh initiatives. Uh, develop standards for commercial and industrial development that are appropriate for the surrounding community, including appropriate site sizes. Use types, buffering and design standards that encourage both attractive and efficient function while protecting the environment. And review and update land use regulations for employee housing to support the goal of enabling this use. In proximity to commercial, industrial, and agricultural uses. So the use uh supports economic development by providing seasonal lodging that aligns with tourism and recreation activities in the county. But uh economic development in the affected zoning districts could be affected by the proposed code amendment. For the land use designate, or excuse me, the land use component. Uh, commercial and industrial uses in areas identified in the comprehensive plan suitable for such development. Should be unconditionally permitted, evaluation of suitability should be based on availability of urban services, adequate access to hard surfaced. Publicly maintained roads and other factors that may impact the surrounding community. Commercial industrial uses may be conditionally permitted in areas not identified for such uses in the comprehensive plan if a critical review of the proposed use. Determines that with appropriate conditions, the use will not adversely impact the surrounding area. RV parks and campgrounds are currently a conditional use in all zoning districts with the exception of forestry forty and in the industrial zoning districts. When considering a conditional use permit, the applicable hearing body is charged with reviewing the proposals and crafting conditions to mitigate the impact on surrounding areas. It should be noted that at the time of the adoption of the subject code, the review standard that was used should be. Or was in accordance with the general and specific objectives of the comprehensive plan. But since that adoption of this code in twenty nineteen, the Board of County Commissioners has adopted new versions of the comprehensive plan components. And today, the hearing body is charged with reviewing applications to determine if they are not in conflict with the policies of the comprehensive plan. And it is unknown to staff whether the, a review was completed to determine compliance with these policies. Before the use was added to the Bonner County Revised Code in twenty nineteen. Natural resources component watershed standards should be employed in land use codes to protect water quality. Best management practices for waterway setbacks should be instituted to reduce erosion and sedimentation into waterways. Development standards should be designed to encourage cluster development resulting in the preservation of open space and wildlife habitat. Bonner County should recognize its critical wildlife habitat and create development standards to protect these areas and mitigate development impacts to these habitats. Protect water quality by creating standards for development in close proximity to shorelines. And productive farmland, timberland, and mining lands should be identified and protected. Excuse me, from adverse effects of adjoining developments. The impacts to natural resources were not identified by any agency. Currently, the RV park campground uses requires a conditional use permit. All conditional use permits regardless of the zoning district are subject to BCRC Title twelve, Chapter seven Environmental Standards. Which addresses standards that provide protections to natural resources. This code amendment does not appear to conflict with the policies of this component. Next is hazardous hazardous areas. Flood mitigation standards should be adopted that meet or exceed the National Flood Insurance Program Minimum Requirements. Residential, commercial, or industrial development within the floodway should be discouraged. Fill within the floodplain should be discouraged. The county's wildland fire, urban wildland, wildland interface policies and plans should be integrated into development standards. Excessive slopes should be identified and develop and development discouraged by providing lower densities within these areas. Multiple points of ingress egress should be considered for large developments and development should be avoided in avalanche zones. So hazardous areas exist in all zoning districts of Bonner County. This comp, this component is evaluated on a case by case basis when evaluating the parcels in conditional use permits proposals. For RV parks and campgrounds. Furthermore, all conditional use permits are subject to BCRC Title fourteen Flood Damage Protection and BCRC Title twelve, Chapter seven. Environmental standards which address development within hazardous areas. This code amendment does not appear to conflict with the policies of this component. Public services, facilities, and utilities encourage high density development to take place within the boundaries of existing sewer and water areas. Bonner County should see comment from existing service providers on their ability to serve future developments without adversely impacting the ability of the utility providers to serve current users. And Bonner County should provide adequate facilities for reasonable disposal of solid waste to protect the health and welfare of the public as well as the county's natural resources. The Board of County Commissioners in their direction to staff implicated that the RV park and campground use. In the lower density areas could potentially introduce unsustainable density in these zones. It could have an impact on services provided in the area, specifically wells and subsurface sewage. The board's intention is to have all higher density uses, commercial or residential. To be within the higher density areas such as the suburban recreation and commercial zoning districts. Which is directly supported by policy number one of this component. And this proposed amendment does not appear to conflict with the remainder of these policies. Transportation, a long term transportation system planned should be developed and regularly updated to ensure reasonable levels of service can be maintained in the future and needs for future road. Extensions and transportation corridors are identified as early as possible. Development in areas that are not served by county standard roads or where transportation is inadequate should be discouraged. And bike and pedestrian trails should be considered in development proposals to connect the communities with existing and planned bike and walking paths wherever possible. So the Bonner County Road and Bridge Department has developed and maintains a comprehensive transportation system plan for unincorporated Bonner County. BCRC twelve dash four nine seven C one RV park standards. Addresses the need for these developments to have direct access on a maintained county road, state highway, forest access roads, or private roads built to Title twelve Appendix A standards. The standard appears to be directly supported by Policy Two of this component. Additionally, BCRC twelve dash four nine seven states that bike and pedestrian access shall be integrated into the site. This standard in BCRC twelve dash four nine seven E appears to be supported by Policy Three of this component. And the proposal does not appear to be in conflict with the remaining policies of this component. Recreation, Bonner County is encouraged to develop a waterways and park access program to preserve and develop access to public recreational lands and waterways. Programs should include retaining access parcels. That may be acquired from tax sales and private donations. A private, excuse me. A plan for a system of green belts and pathways should be considered as areas develop. So that a connected system can be developed and preserved. Under no circumstances will Bonner County require access easements on private property as a condition of development. This policy does not preclude providing voluntary incentives to developers in return for access easements. Current recreational opportunities for the general public that are available in Bonner County are anticipated to remain the same with this code amendment. The availability availability of less lodging. Or camping options could potentially impact the expansion of recreational activities in the rural agricultural forestry and rural service center zone district areas. Special areas or sites, a generalized map of the known prehistoric and historic sites should be developed so that. Future developments are aware of special areas of concern. And are connected with the historical society and Native American tribes for appropriate preservation and protection. Bonner County should implement roadside development standards for recognized scenic byways to protect the view sheds. Special areas should be recognized and addressed when development is proposed in these areas. And this project does not appear to be in conflict with the policies of this component. Housing. Encourage development or development of a. Variety of housing options including mobile home parks, tiny home communities, and recreational vehicle parks located in areas that are compatible with their density. Work with municipalities and private parties to find solutions for all types of housing projects and developments. Clustering of housing and developments to save on infrastructure. And transportation costs should be encouraged through mechanisms such as density bonuses. Bonner County recognizes opportunities should be made for assisted living and group shelters. And enable workforce housing in direct proximity to agricultural, commercial, and industrial uses. So BCRC twelve dash three three two and twelve dash four nine six outline recreational vehicle dwelling units. Which allow for recreational vehicles to be used in the same manner as a single family dwelling or accessory dwelling unit. In contrast, BCRC twelve dash three 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 and twelve dash four nine seven implicate that. RV parks and campgrounds are to be used as short term stays. RV parks and campgrounds are not intended to serve as long term or workforce housing. Comparable transient lodgings uses identified in the commercial use table such as hotels, hostels, resorts. And retreats are not intended for long term or permanent residential occupancy. Similarly, RV parks permitted within commercial zones are intended to accommodate short term stays and should not function as permanent residential development. Further support for such a limitation can be found in Idaho Code sixty three eighteen oh three four and sixty seven. Sixty five thirty nine, which define short term occupancy as thirty days or less. And affirm the authority of local jurisdictions to regulate land uses accordingly. Based on this guidance, a limitation of thirty cumulative stays per calendar year per guest is considered appropriate to maintain. The commercial nature of this use and avoid reclassification as residential occupancy. So as a commercial use, this does not. This does not conflict with the goals of this component. Community design. We're almost there, sorry. To promote. To promote and preserve the natural features and rural atmosphere of the community. The county should enact development standards that address development within scenic byways and design standards that account for waterfront setbacks, wildlife corridors. Commercial and industrial landscaping requirements for reduced lighting, cluster development, rural rather than urban setback standards. And other design objectives aimed at preserving the rural natural character of the community. Allow unique and flexible design standards such that. Such that new development within older neighborhoods and historic settlements is compatible with those unique neighborhoods. And allow particularized design standards to address waterfront and mountaintop developments. Which may differ from standard design objectives. Some recent proposals for RV parks and campgrounds have attracted notable public attention. Many community members have expressed concerns about the compatibility of these uses. With the rural character and intended development patterns of the zoning districts in which they are proposed. These concerns often center on potential impacts to the surrounding area. And whether such uses align with the expectations for rural residential living. Agriculture, residential uses should continue being permitted in agricultural zoning districts. Protect agricultural uses and activities from land use conflicts or interference created by residential, commercial. Or industrial development. Land use regulations should support home occupations, cottage industries, and farm based family businesses on agricultural parcels. Examples include farm stands and other agribusiness pursuits. Bonner County acknowledges the provisions of Idaho State's Right to Farm Act, and those shall be considered in the land use decisions. This proposal does not appear to conflict with the policies of this component as farming and agricultural pursuits remain viable and are encouraged in the rural and agricultural forestry zoning districts. And that is my presentation, I can answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions of staff? Well, no, thank you, Alex.
I have one question. Your reference comes from twenty nineteen and the Rural Service Center. Was in existence, so it's twenty nineteen when we changed it to the county changed it to allow RV parks conditionally in the rural Ag and Forest Zones.
Yeah, it included the rural Ag Forest Zones and the suburban zone.
But the Rural Service Center, prior to that, they were already allowed in the Rural Service.
That's correct.
Condition.
Yeah, that's correct.
All right, any other questions?
Thanks, Alex.
Thank you. All right, with that, we'll open for public comment, open this hearing, the public comment. I note that we have received. Several public comments, all of which have been reviewed, we have received excessive comment from. Bonner County Rural, and that's been reviewed as well. So with that, we'll open, hold the carry.
My name is Dennis Walker, I'm a Bonner County resident. And I would like to express my support for the proposed amendment to put the. Restriction on RV parks and rural residential areas. Prior to twenty twenty, I think it in December, the idea was first tossed around by the. By the Board of Commissioners and it was. Put in effect in twenty twenty, so it's been about five years since they've allowed RV parks in rural residential areas. My wife and I purchased a home in Bonner County that was to be our last home. We didn't expect to need another one. And if it's not obvious, well, maybe, I'm not going to give you any more hints, but. So when we found out, like, it was two years after we had lived there and we loved the place, you know? Neither one of us had really lived in a rural environment before, and we like it, the fact that it's quiet. Most of the day, you don't hear chatter from, you know, too many people in the neighborhood, you don't. See or hear a lot of traffic, there is an occasional car or truck that comes down the road. Oh, by the way, my wife and I, as well as all of our neighbors, have been under what I would call the threat. Of an RV park opening since twenty twenty one, I think. And we found out about it in twenty twenty two, and my response was, you gotta be kidding. Our house is in a rural residential area. That's no place for an RV park. You know, we, we're looking forward to spending the rest of our lives in the house that we purchased. In a, in a rural atmosphere, you know, with the, with the lowered activity. The low density of just having a handful of neighbors in your vicinity, not. Eighty or, or I don't know how many of those, those places are allowed to hold, but the. And I can't go into too much detail about the park that's going on next to us because it's an ongoing. Thing before the county itself, so I don't want to, I don't know if you guys are going to be involved in that at all in the future, but, but I'll just say that. It, well, I'll just go ahead and say it, and if I'm not supposed to, then tell me that I, that I shouldn't have said it after the fact. It's got twenty spaces with a potential of eighty people. Living there and an estimate by the applicant that there will be an additional forty vehicles that could be coming and going. All day and all night, I don't think you could put a restriction on when. RV park occupants can drive anywhere, right, so we're going to go from. Intermittent, very few people driving down our road to forty vehicles potentially driving to and fro. And, oh, before I forget, forget it, there is. From my understanding is there is no, no way in Bonner County code to enforce. Regulations like a thirty day stay restriction, I don't think there's any way you guys can enforce that, or the county can. And we anticipate that we'll have a lot of problems with that RV park. Over the years, and we've even put off adding. Like a shop to our property because we're not sure if we're going to want to live there. After the RV park goes in, and we have, we're exposed to. A, a different atmosphere than we are now. By the way, this, this proposed one is only seven hundred and what, thirty feet? From us, which is like two hundred what, forty yards or something, it's close enough that we'll be able to hear. People maybe not talking at a, at a normal voice, but if they happen to shout or talk loudly. The starting of vehicles, engine noise, not. Dirt bikes, I guess RVers like to, like to come with their dirt bikes and quads, that's going to be noise, it's going to be. Commotion, and I don't know, it's just, it's just been a real disappointment, you know, that, that we've had to encounter this. What was it like before twenty twenty when the code was changed to allow RV parks? What was it that changed? The people that bought property long before we did, we've only been around here for about four years. Weren't they entitled to some kind of expectation that their, that their quality of life would change? Would, I'm sorry, would remain the same indefinitely? We were, when we bought it four years ago, we thought we were going to be in an area where it was going to be rural. In, in nature, you know, quiet. And that's not even to mention the, the increased risk having to do with a high density project like that versus. One, one or two home, well, one home up to two RVs, that's what the code says you could have on, on. Your, your property, unless it's less than one acre, then you can only have one RV, is my understanding, but, but nonetheless, I don't want to. Complain too much about our, our expected. Lifestyle change and the fact that we may want to move, I'll just say it's definitely on our mind. And doesn't the comprehensive code have something to say about property values? For people that live in rural residential areas? Is it right for an operation to show up somewhere in your neighborhood? And for you to, to say, not, not like the changes that occur because of it, and you want to move? And when you sell your house, you realize that you're taking a loss? Because not only do you not like living next to an RV park, any potential buyers that might consider your home, they also do not want to live close to a, to an RV park. So what happens then? You can't find out, you can't. Uh, you can't find out, you can't find a buyer, so what do you have to do when you can't find a buyer and you want to sell your property? You lower the asking price. Well, that's lower property values. Does, does the county, I mean, hopefully the county will, will consider that. And, and, uh, and, and everything else that goes along with the impact that an RV park has on rural residents. Uh, and, and decide that, let's, let's take it back to the way it was before twenty twenty, let RV parks, uh, open up in places that are more appropriate for it. And one last thing, um, uh, Sheriff Wheeler, uh, on March the twenty-sixth, wrote a letter to the, to the County Planning Commission concerning the RV park that we're, we're, uh, dealing with. And most of this in his letter is specific to that particular application. Uh, but the last, the last paragraph is more broad-based, I would say. I'll quote it. "The health", let me make sure that. "The health, welfare, and safety of visitors and our residents staying or living in or around RV parks is far better served by placing those facilities in zones with close proximity to emergency infrastructure, e.g., fire hydrants, paved roads, and emergency services." And I agree with that, uh, not, again, not to be uh, specific about our particular, uh, case, uh, a lot of rural areas don't have paved roads. Our property is off of Clagstone, which, uh, at least the place where we live, the area that we live is, is a, basically a dirt road. It's, I guess it's categorized as a gravel road. Well, what do you call a gravel road that doesn't have hardly any gravel on it? It's a dirt road, and, and the, and the rainy season and when the thaw happens, that road is, is hundreds of potholes everywhere. And it's not asphalt, it's not, you know, it's just a dirt, basically a dirt road with gravel. Uh, and someone brought up, and one of the discussions about our case was that what about the RVs that are big, oversized, and are incompatible with, with the roads that we have out there? What hap, what happens about them? Is there some way to enforce oversized RVs from, uh, from using an RV park? I mean, who's going to come and tell them, you shouldn't have driven here, you know, your RV's too heavy for these roads, you're going to have to leave. Nobody's even going to do that, you know? So it's, it's like, we'll, we'll suffer the damage on our roads, and as proper, as taxpayers, you know, the, the residents out there, we're going to have to, like, fix those roads, I guess. And, and the people that stay in RV parks, uh, I'm not going to say anything bad about them because RV parks are, are necessary. They should be in appropriate places for RV parks. But, uh, so, I guess, I, I guess that's all I got to say. Uh, and I, 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 I hope that we don't, that, that my wife and I don't have to move because we like our house, we like our neighbors, we like the atmosphere out there, the environment. But I'll be darned if we're going to be awakened all hours of the night by people coming and going, starting any generators that they may have, or, or dirt bikes, you know, scooting around the place all the time, when right now it's nice and quiet there. I do not look forward to what it's going to be like with an RV park in our rural residential area. And hopefully, something will be done at the county level to keep that from happening to any future uh, residents out there who, who are in a similar, in a similar predicament. I mean, uh, how many people that live in rural residential areas even know that that's a risk they're putting up with right now? Tomorrow, you may hear that there's going to be an RV park going up right next door to you. Uh, and, um, so what do you do? All you can do is depend on our, our, uh, elected officials, in this case, the Board of Commissioners, which they have seen, I think, and understand the, our, our predicament, you know? Am I going too long?
Yeah, I think you can wrap it up.
Yeah, I, I don't want to belabor it. I'm sorry, I'm just saying that I really hope that, that something gets done about it. If not for our case, but for the, the, in the future for other residential people that do not want to see that happen to them, just like I don't want to see it happen to, to us. So, thank you.
Sure. Well, let me ask you one question. Um, what zone do you live in? What's, what's, what is your zoning?
Uh, district, oh, it's a, a rural residential five-acre minimum.
Okay. Thank you.
And I have one question, too. I heard you say it's on a county road, so it doesn't have direct access onto Ohio.
It does. We live about, uh, three-quarters of a mile from, uh, Clax, from where Clagstone hits I forty-one.
Okay.
It doesn't go across forty-one, but it starts off.
Idaho forty-one?
Yes, what did I say?
I forty-one is over in Kentucky.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I come from a different state. We have different nomenclature for.
Transportation engineer. I'm a transportation engineer. I was saying I ninety-five through Idaho, and gee, I didn't know they moved it.
So th, this, this proposed, our, our, it doesn't border, it doesn't have direct access.
It's about, it's about, I'm almost a mile from forty-one off of Clagstone, and, and that area, Clagstone is dirt. And not only that, but, uh, it doesn't have, uh, shoulders, there's no sidewalks. So it's, it's, uh, this is getting into our particular case, but at the location where it's proposed, uh, uh, there, there are no sidewalks, and it's, it's an intersection. Clagstone, Al's Welding becomes Blanchard cutoff at that particular intersection that goes to Blanchard. And there, there's no recreational opportunities anywhere around there. You know, and, uh, it's, it's just a, it's a bad place for an RV park. And as, as far as the, the, uh, welfare of the rural resident, residents out there, it's a very bad deal. I mean, imagine if you found out, if, if you own five acres, and, and our property, uh, is, is a, a the majority of our life savings, me and my wife, you know, so that's a big investment for us. We're looking forward to living there. And now I'm anticipating having to move, and, and I don't like that. My wife hate, hates to move, she, you know? Every time we move, I have to tell her for sure, this is going to be the last time.
So, you know. You know, I just may, maybe make sure that I think you realize this, but whatever we do today, it's not going to have an effect on that application.
Right, that's why I hesitated to even bring it up.
I just want to make sure that you understood that.
Yes.
It's going to be, it's going to be evaluated under the future.
Right, I understand.
Law, code, or, or, or in fact, when.
Whatever file. I just wanted you guys to know where I'm coming from, when I, when I'm talking about it, you know, it's like, uh, it's actually, uh, affecting us more than just a, uh, what, the, uh, academic exercise of what would it be like to live next to an RV park?
No, I think, I think we understand that.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Any other public comments? Anybody online now? I don't see anybody. Oh, no. This is a surprise. I'll be here all week, folks. Dave Bowman, for the record, uh, I won't go through, we submitted our comments and you have them, and if you have questions, that's fine. I don't want to belabor. The stuff.
Okay, uh, I, I actually do. Um, another question. So, I might move there. Well, the, uh, the proposal or the, what's considering, under consideration is to remove, uh, RV parks from not only rural, but also Ag Forest, but also Rural Service Center.
Right.
So Rural Service Centers, according to what we've been going through, um, are not going to be allowed in ru, in rural or Ag Forest.
Correct.
So what's the point of taking, making?
Because that hasn't happened yet.
Well.
And we don't know for sure it's going to happen. I mean, that's a zoning thing, right? So in the meantime, that's why.
Well. But you would agree.
They exist now.
You would agree that Rural Service Centers, if they're in recreation, suburban, commercial zones, that they should be, or commercial areas, they should be allowed.
Correct.
Right?
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, I I'm having a hard time figuring out why we should eliminate Rural Services.
Because there's, because we don't know, I mean, we don't know for sure that's going to happen. And, and it should happen, but even if it does happen, there's a gap between now and then where, where they will still be in the rural, uh, zone. And I mean, that's why. And also Rural Service Center is intended to provide service to the people who live in that rural area, which.
I understand, I understand that's in your argument, but
Well.
if you look at the actual language, it also says.
I have one.
It also says tourist-related activities, too.
It does. But there aren't.
RV parks.
They're not being used by tourists in the rural area.
No, I mean, that's, I understand that's your point, but you, you know, it seems to me that if the Rural Service Centers are in the recreation areas and suburban areas and so on, where they're, number one, there's services. And then number two, um, yeah, that seems to be where they ought to be.
Yeah.
I agree, I agree, I agree that they shouldn't be in rural.
But in, until or unless that happens, we're stuck with this, that we, that the current situation we have.
Okay. I understand.
I mean, forgive me if I don't have a lot of faith in our future Bonner County Commissioners to do the right thing, based on paths. I mean, that's part of it.
But even, even if we make that change and the Board of Commissioners change, you know, same thing that this board is doing right now.
They can, yeah. Elections matter, I get it. But that, I mean, that's the answer to the question.
Well, did you, if I may, ask him another question?
Sure.
Did you consider maybe, uh, addressing this through the standards versus proposing to go ahead and eliminating on those zones? I mean, I can understand the Ag and the Forest. But I do believe that there's probably some areas in the rural zones that actually have border highway frontage. You know, I, I went back and I listened to the hearing, uh, it wasn't a hearing, but it was a meeting with the board upstairs, um, when they made the recommendation, go ahead and make these changes. But I, I remember hearing comments also from other folks that said, you know, i- if they're correctly on the highway.
I, I heard those comments, too.
Yeah.
But what else is along most of Highway ninety-five is Ag. So do we really want to put an RV park on the edge of Woods Hay Farm up there? I don't.
No, but I'm, I'm thinking of the rural five that has highway fringe might be another, another thought.
Well, you can think that. I disagree with that. I mean, it, it's, those are rural parcels in rural areas, and I don't think they want an RV park on, on their, I mean, most of those lands going up and down there are rural in nature, except for where they got pockets of commercial or industrial. So if Mr. Walker's place happened to be on ninety-five, but it's still rural and everything backs up to rural, I don't, I still don't think he'd want an RV park just because he's on Highway ninety-five. I, I don't think you'd find a lot of people on Highway ninety-five who are living in a rural parcel who would want to have an RV park next to them.
So let, let me just step in. Sorry, sorry. Susan Bowman. Um, I want to speak to that. Um, so right now, it's kind of like the stop the bleeding, right? So what you're talking about is a larger, um, study, if you will, about where should we put RV parks? Right now, we know that the people of Bonner County do not want them in their rural zones, in their rural, rural residential areas. We know that for an absolute fact. And why the county ever did that is, is kind of suspect because their excuse was to say, well, there was a growing demand for recreation in the rural residential zones. Who was demanding that? Certainly not the people that live there, right? So this is about the people that live in rural residential zones and what they do and do not want. Now, why the county opened up RV parks for that, that's completely unclear to us. But getting into the weeds right now of saying, well, let's look at these areas and these areas, you are, you would need to do like a little study. You'd have to go out and, you know, maybe take a, a bus or something, take a map with you to see where places, there might be places on ninety-five that would be appropriate, but that's not what we're doing tonight. Tonight, we need to stop the bleeding, and the reason that Keep Bonner County Rural has brought this forward over and over again is because since twenty twenty-one, we've been bouncing back and forth from court, court, court back, court back, court back, several appeals, several reconsiderations, and that
Eight.
eight of them in total, okay, and thousands of dollars. Um, by, you know, people like this, this gentleman right here, and we could have packed this room tonight, by the way. We, we could have packed it with people, but we know that most people can't spend four and a half hours of their night coming to a meeting like this. And we've got the appeal coming up in a couple of weeks, but I, I just want to back up just a little bit here just to let those of you who don't know about Keep Bonner County Rural, just a little bit about Keep Bonner County Rural. It was formed in twenty twenty-one by a bunch of people that got together at Connie's because they were concerned about the high-density development that was seeming to railroad through our, um, rural areas. And from that spring, you know, we have a Board of Directors, but it's all very loose. We don't have funding or anything like that. Dave and I do most, really all of the work. And we had three thousand people sign a petition at the beginning of Keep Bonner County Rural, saying that they want to keep their county rural. RV parks are not a rural use. There isn't any way that you could argue that. There, there is not one argument that you could bring to say that a five hundred percent or a two thousand percent increase in density is a rural use. So, um, you know, to your point, Matt, about maybe we should put them here, or maybe we should put them there. Right now, all of those areas are still zoned in Ag Forest and, and, you know, rural residential, um, that sort of thing. And so I, I don't think that that should be considered tonight, honestly. So it's going to get us into the weeds.
So Rural Service Center, as I think we, we, was pointed out earlier, uh, that was not part of the change in twenty twenty.
Right, that it was already.
Rural Service Centers have always been allowed. RV parks have been allowed there.
That's why we addressed that in our letter. Um, it, it does not follow the code.
I guess you didn't convince me.
Okay, well, oh. So here, here we go, um, and I won't bore you by just reading the whole thing, but, um.
I've read it, so.
Okay, so what, part of it is not convincing because, um, this twelve-three-two-seven, the Rural Service Center District, it is all about local commercial services, small communities, small-scale retail. It's about supporting the surrounding rural area, that entire part of the code talks about that. So what part of that would you disagree with?
It also talks about tourists.
Right, and, and we did, um, but it only talks about tourists in a certain light there. Again, the tourism part even would support the surrounding rural residential area. So we even gave you some examples, like, for example, you know, a kayak rental would support, that type of commercial business would. An RV, how is an RV park going to support the surrounding rural residential residents of an area?
Well, I, I guess I don't read it that restricted. But, you know, I mean, obviously, I read it one way, I read it another way.
Okay, well, we can disagree on that, that's okay. Um, but that's, that's also, you're picking out one tiny little part of that entire part of the code.
But, but the whole point of Rural Service Center is for commercial purposes.
Right, small scale, small-scale retail that support the surrounding rural residents.
You know, restaurants.
Yeah, exactly.
Like as far as what.
Yep. Yep, uh, uh, think of the impact of a, of a restaurant as opposed to a five hundred to two thousand percent density increase of RVs with the traffic.
How many, how many Rural Service Centers are actually in rural residential areas or Ag Forests?
If I was your planner, I would have that information ready for you, but I'm not. Yeah, so I.
I know, I, I know.
Okay, well, then what, what is it?
We looked it up, too.
Yeah, I don't remember either.
I only saw one that was in the Ag Forest, and this actually kind of, Ag Forest.
Okay, well, that's one too many then, because again, anybody that lives around there is going to have to suffer through.
No, this, how many Rural Service Centers, not RV Centers?
Yeah.
He said how many.
Okay, so. Rural Service, so somebody could go and put an RV park near the valet.
The one that I, you know, if there is an RV park there already.
Yeah, okay.
It's not bothering anybody.
Are you sure of that?
I'm pretty positive.
Have you talked to all the residents surrounding there, and they've told you that they're totally fine with it, and it's great? Great neighbors? Because what we have heard around the county, and we've talked to people all over this county on a regular basis, is that they are bothersome. We even had a lot of people coming to us to tell us that they were bothered by the people that put too many residential RVs on their properties, like some people have five and, you know, six of those things hanging out on their property.
The extent that, that, to the extent that the zoning allows is for a Rural Service Center, it seems to me that that's when the, that's when this problem it, I, I don't have a problem with eliminating it from Ag Forest or rural residential, I don't have a problem. I, I just have a real problem with Rural Service Center. It seems to me that that's, that's one area. You know, I, I understand that, well, maybe, you know, maybe they'll be allowed in, in other areas, but you know, the third, certainly the thinking that we have is that they should be allowed in the recreation areas and in the suburban areas and commercial areas. I mean, that's.
Aaron, you live in that neighborhood, so I would, I would invite her up to, like, how would, how would you like to have an RV park near the valet door there? I, I, I really disagree with you vociferously on that because. what you have to take into consideration that is if you live around that Rural Service Center and you're in a rural place like Mr. Walker is, you're gonna have, you're gonna face the same problems, the same impacts. The impacts aren't gonna decrease because the zone is different. Go ahead.
Thank you.
Karen Kelly, Bonner County resident. And I'm just kind of listening to this, and I agree with Matt that they were been allowed and Rural Service Centers have been allowed. Um, let me back up. I think tonight, that's where our issue is. You guys are not maybe struggling with agriculture and rural, but questioning the Rural Service Center dictate that the commercial Commissioner sent to you. Um, I at one time Jake had given me RV parks and campgrounds for the last five years, your list. And so I looked them all up. We've created sixty four units. We have two that were created in a Rural Service Center in the last five years for a total of twenty two units. I don't think the demand's there. We've tried something. Um, and I noticed some are done by one particular developer. Um, I'm nervous, sorry. Uh, and I'm not sure in the analysis that you've been given by planning. Did they look at that? Did they tell you that? Um, are they looking at how much recreation is available in this county right now? Um, I remember back on the initial um, when we were arguing about the Rural Service Center to go in in our area, I looked around at Albany Park and or Round Lake State Park, Albany Cove, talked to the people at Riley Creek, and we have thousands of millions of dollars being brought in from RVs and camping. And the last five years do not show the demand for a change, and I think it's time we tried something? Let's try it the other way. Let's go back. Let's take it out. Let's see what the pushback really is. Um, the Rural Service Center code. Hang on. The Rural Service Center, the code is for light commercial, for limited tourist commercial services. Um, and to provide small scale, was the example that Susan gave of a kayak. But activities that are be primarily indoors, there's also a water, um, sewage, septic, all of those things. I think where the Rural Service Centers did go in, there's no urban services. It kind of looks like expanding along the I five corridor. Wait, I ninety five corridor makes a property more.
Ninety five either.
I, I'm sorry, I ninety.
U S ninety five.
U S ninety five, you know what I'm talking about. It'll make it more valuable in that if there is expansion. So I'm sorry if I'm rambling, but um, the Rural Service Center is supposed to serve local residents, limited commercial consistent with rural character, and I think that's where the real problem is. Let's go back. Let's take it out. Let's see what happens. What's, the demand isn't there, the analysis hasn't been given to you to justify it.
I have a question, either Susan or Karen. So this, the way this is worded, it's RV park slash campground.
Yeah, you had five.
No mention about campgrounds. Now, campgrounds.
I think you've had five spaces built in the last five years. Campgrounds, not a demand there either.
In the letter, yeah.
Am I right, Jake?
On campground, I can think of one.
And and RV part, um, from the list you gave me.
And I don't know at this point whether a campground is limited to tents, tent trailers or not. RVs, because everybody seems to like to go camping in an RV.
Still, a Rural Service Center is limited is for indoor activities. Notes more.
They're two different things, but I don't know that. I don't, I don't think there's any definition within this says if you pull up to a campground in an RV, you can't stay there. That that was my question.
Well, they they are in the tables, it's you have a certain amount of square feet spacing and all that.
Right, right.
But I, I don't know, anyway.
And and campgrounds have similar impacts, not not the same as RV parks, but similar. So, you know, that that would be um, what I would say about that, but I wanted to talk to Alan again about the you know, the, again, this is the Rural Service Center District. Um, this is the the purpose statement. And right in the very beginning, um, it says promote the development of local commercial services in small communities to meet the needs of to meet the needs of rural residents. So that's the very first statement. To meet the needs of rural residents. Meeting the needs of rural residents is central to the purpose. And while it's also true that that statement includes promoting limited tourist commercial act services, this can only be accomplished if the impacts can be mitigated. And that use can also serve rural residential needs. So I just wanted to emphasize that, that um, it doesn't meet the code. Having in the Rural Service Center does not meet the code. So it probably never did, and it was probably an oversight. Um, whenever they did allow it, I don't, I don't know. So that that's a good question for whoever knows the, you know, the history of the planning, yeah.
Well, I I have twelve, three, twenty seven Rural Service Center District code up right here. Uh, allowing or mixed use of buildings, housing or raw, housing or an office or retail. Range of housing types including detached, single family dwelling units, cottage housing, townhouses, apartments, mobile home parks where sufficient services are provided.
Mm hmm.
No mention of campground?
No mention of campground.
Yeah, but but the the key there is where services are provided. So you can't add those types of higher density housing unless you have public services, it says right in there.
Well, it's. You know, we're gonna be discussing urban services and that stuff here at some point, maybe tonight. So, you know, the the adequate sufficient, it uses sufficient services provided.
Well, for those types of housing, what would that be? That would be sewer.
Well, we're a lot in, but Rural Service Center. You know, it goes on all those lists and mobile home parks where sufficient services are provided. Um, you know, and I don't know, you know, we discuss things with them unless it meets the level of a twenty five hundred gallons per day or has to have an LSAS. Uh, you can do that with a lot, you know, leaf throws. Um, as long as you have a sufficient water, you know, IDWR says that, um. So when it says sufficient services, I, it doesn't state. You know, they have to leave them.
That are served at the time of development. So that that's kind of key as well.
See that?
Um.
You can twelve, three, twenty seven.
So twelve, three, twenty seven.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So I think you need to read all of twelve, three, twenty seven.
I agree, yeah.
Because it says B.
Mm hmm.
Use of the zone, this is in the current code, is appropriate in areas designated as neighborhood, commercial, resort, community, or transition by the comprehensive plan and the community plans that are served at the time of development adequate. I'm reading as wrong.
Adequate sewage.
That are served. New plans and are served at the time of development by adequate public sewers, water supply, roads, and needed public facilities and services. Expansion of existing Rural Service Centers or the creation of new Rural Service Center districts may be considered only if the expansion will not negatively affect safety and function in the state highway or the roadways.
Mm hmm.
So that's basically, you know, the the cop plan as we proposed it um, is no different than that. We we've said that it's appropriate in recreation, which is the old resort community. And the transition and neighborhood commercial is basically mixed use. So, I mean, those are the areas that that it's allowed under our proposal and also under this. So I I'm not sure.
How does that relate to RV parks and campgrounds? I'm sorry.
Well.
I'm not following.
It means that if you allowed it in Rural Service Center, well, the Rural Service Center is supposedly designated, only allowed in or should be doubt and designated according to current law, in neighborhood, commercial, resort, community, or transition. Not, you know, not in the other rural districts. So, I mean, that's that's my problem.
Those are land uses, aren't they, as opposed to zoning?
Um, this use of this zone is appropriate.
Use of the Rural Service Center zone is appropriate in the areas designated as isn't neighborhood, commercial, resort, community, aren't those land uses and not zones, or am I wrong? Those are zones?
No, 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 they're all non-plans, they're non-plan designations.
Says designate.
Yeah, so it's saying that, isn't it saying then that our RSC zone basically is appropriate in those land uses, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so we're on the same.
And it doesn't, interesting point, I think, that Alan's making is it does not include rural residential, and it does not include ag forest. Despite the fact that there are some that exist in those.
So when we were talking to Dave earlier.
Right.
You know, Dave said, well, yeah, I mean, you know, but but that's in the future because if we don't know if the Commissioner's gonna buy what we proposed, well, that's the law now.
I get that, yeah.
So, that's that's my problem.
However, but couldn't couldn't somebody put an application? So so say you guys don't pass this, and then it, you know, say it doesn't get passed, say say this amendment does not get passed, could somebody not put an application in then, or say you say, no, we're not, we're gonna allow it in the Rural Service Center zone? So until that gets changed, somebody can put an application in at the valet cafe, right there in that Rural Service Center, they're not?
I don't know the valet cafe personally. I mean, I've seen it. I doubt that it's served by sewers.
Yeah, but that's not a requirement for RV parks.
But that, but that, I don't know how that they, you know, this is way beyond my
Mm hmm.
My my knowledge is how that how that ever got designated as a as a uh, Rural Service Center, I don't know.
It doesn't.
It doesn't seem like it would be applicable now because it's not in a in a neighborhood, commercial, it's not in resort, community.
It's not just that property, it's the surrounding properties too, are also.
Pretty small area.
Yeah.
As I've seen it.
They all, I'm waiting to see if somebody does an RV park.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I, you know, there there's other reasons, there's other requirements. I mean, you can't, because it, say, we 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 live, we take out the conditional in a used table, part of it in the used table for the rural and and ag forest. If we leave it in residence, that doesn't mean that it's automatically going to be conditionally approved for the valet center. I mean, it just doesn't mean that at all. I mean, the valet center, and I'm sure there's anomalies all over the county like that, but you still have to meet certain requirements, and that is, you know, you've got to have essentially what this describes to me is is urban services. And very few, very few areas have that. Very few Rural Service Center areas probably have that. The one that I was suggesting, the one that I was suggesting where I know there is an RV park in a Rural Service Center, it does have those services.
Right, but but that has not been a standard that they've looked at for RV parks at all.
Yeah, I can't respond to that.
And and.
All I can do is read, you know, I can read. That's about all I can do.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is that the the zoning commission and even Matt was on the zoning commission when they first approved the one that's in court right now and stuff like that. And um, there was basically zero analysis of the code. So, you know, there wasn't any like the the noise, the light, the glare, none of that was looked at.
But that's, but but the one that's in litigation, as I understand it, is in a rural residential zone.
It is, yeah.
It's a rural five, right?
Yeah. So what's the harm? Let me ask you this. What is the harm in taking RV parks out of RSC zone? What's the harm in that?
The harm is that one of the things that this county relies on pretty heavily is tourism. It's a big economic driver. And I understand taking it out of rural residential, I understand taking it out of ag forest. But the Rural Service Centers are gonna end up being in basically tourist oriented areas, basically in neighborhood, commercial, resort, resort, community. Uh, that's, that's where, that's where, that's where the tourism is gonna be. You can't, you know, you can't kill, you know, one golden egg. You know, I mean, you gotta, you gotta make a balance. That's what I'm, that's what I'm concerned about. I I see, we have to make a balance somewhere. I understand this gentleman's argument completely. I understand the other arguments completely.
Mm hmm.
I just have a hard time saying on a blanket basis, no, no RV park can be conditionally permitted in a rural residential zone when the rural residential zone is is restricted to certain cop land land use designation.
You mean RSC zone?
What did I say?
Rural residential.
I mean, I'm.
Well, then then you, you're gonna need to change the Rural Service Center District Purpose Statement. Honestly.
Not really, when you read the whole thing, that's why I say.
I did read the whole thing, I analyzed it.
Need to read B.
B, okay. So B is use of this zone, that one that is appropriate.
Yep.
Okay, use of this zone is appropriate in areas designated as neighborhood, commercial, resort, community, or transition by the comprehensive plan and community plans. And that are served by the, served at the time of development by adequate sewage disposal services, water supply roads, and other needed public facilities and services.
That's, that's the code.
Right.
Yeah, so those things now have to get regardless of what happened in the past.
So you're saying that if an if an RV park tried to go into a current Rural Service Center zone, they could not do so unless there was adequate sewage disposal services and such. Yeah, but but this is a purpose statement, so let's not forget that. This is a purpose statement. So you can't use a purpose statement to basically uh, make somebody follow the code. This is the purpose statement.
But it's assuming you're right, and I'm not gonna concede that, but it certainly is guidance that that if you're gonna conditionally approve something, it better be, better have those public services.
Yeah, that's not how a purpose statement works, though.
Purpose, to me.
Basically.
They hear the use of this zone is.
Right.
That's not a purpose statement, that's a, this is what it's for.
Yeah, but the purpose statement is, it's described in the zoning code as is, this is the purpose for the zone. It is not how you um, uh, basically you don't, you don't go to the purpose statement necessarily to say, okay, um, we're gonna check these boxes here before you can put this use in that zone.
Well, so if we were, to me, we're B is not a purpose statement. If the where does this, where do Rural Service Centers belong statement?
Yeah.
What zones and under what conditions? So it belongs in neighborhood, commercial, resort, community, transition, served by development of adequate sewage disposal services, et cetera, et cetera. It's how do you decide where Rural Service Center belongs?
I agree, I agree.
If you read all of A, which is a purpose center, the purpose statement goes on beyond the statement that you read earlier to say the Rural Service Center District is also intended to provide opportunities for a variety of affordable housing types that are within walking distance of commercial services.
Mm hmm.
Now, you can debate what's a variety of affordable housing types, but an RV park may be one of them.
Yes, not housing.
I would also argue, we're talking about RV parks as though they're supporting tourism. And my seat of the pants observation is that's not what they're being used for. They're being used for affordable housing.
Yes, and they are not appropriately used that way.
Vacationing here in Bonner County wants to go park their RV by the valet store. They want to be up by Priest Lake, they want to be down at Garfield Bay, you know, those are where people who are coming here for tourism purposes want to be.
I agree.
An RV park along ninety five, an RV park by the valet store, it's being used for low cost housing.
Yes, I totally agree.
Not to denigrate that at all, but just realistically, that's what it's being used for.
Agree, agree. I totally one hundred percent agree with you.
And we did hear some, I I heard some testimony at one point that our like ninety five could support an RV park because it's transitional, you know, people are traveling from one spot to another. They haven't actually got to their destination, whatever that, whatever.
Perhaps.
That's, yeah, right, and there are some, there are some that are doing that.
But. Yeah, I I do, I do want to thank you for that point because it's absolutely true, and what we find, there is no way that the county is going to be able to tell you how long you can stay at an RV park. There is absolutely no way to do that. Yeah. So they are residential then.
All right, so.
Can I get on my jacket?
Uh, okay, we have some people online, so I don't know who they are, so.
Who's online? I want iPhone.
iPhone, Mr. iPhone?
Okay.
Whoever's on the, how many people do we have?
Two.
They don't have names?
What iPhone?
iPhone. Okay. iPhone person?
I'll beat your iPhone.
Yeah, you, you'd like to give us a comment? Go ahead.
Hello?
Hello.
Hi, iPhone M seven.
I don't know why it's coming across that way. Sorry, I'm having issues with my phone. Um, my name is Priscilla Emmett, and I am a Bonner County resident and also fighting the NR. Um, my name is Priscilla Emmett and I am a Bonner County resident and also fighting the NRV park. And I would just like to say that I back up what's uh, Mr. and Mrs. Bowman are doing, also I'm Mr. Walker's neighbor and. Coming from having lots of issues fighting this RV park and they do not belong in rural areas. And we want to keep our and maintain our rural character around here and an RV park has major impacts, no matter. I heard somebody say they have no impacts, bull. They have major impacts and I have talked to people that live around RV parks, they do not bring anything positive. Unless you have a stone ridge or something where people are paying three hundred thousand dollars for a spot. But they don't belong in rural areas and um, just bring major negative impacts. So I support this bill and that's all I have to say, thank you.
Somebody else online? Pardon me? Michelle Johnson?
Actually, it's Rob Johnson, I'm Michelle's husband, she's listening in behind me, I'm a Bonner County resident. And I would also like to um, back what the Bowman's have said and uh, I'm trying to. Maintain my decorum because as I'm listening, I'm finding myself getting frustrated here and I feel that. This organization is not listening to the people, this organization has a duty to the people, but they're not listening to them. Uh, this RV park as well as other businesses such as a wedding venue, cell towers, airstrips, bike parks. There's a systemic problem and there's the same problem with all of them. They go against the comprehensive plan and revised code, but all I keep hearing at this meeting and other meetings is we gotta get them in there. We gotta get them in somehow, we gotta promote the tourism at what cost? The cost to the people, the cost to the residents, we lose our homes to this, we lose our neighbors to this. We've had six neighbors move out in my neighborhood over the wedding venue. Why are you going against the people and the codes to promote these things at the cost of all of us? And the taxpayers, when we take this to court, we have to spend our time and money fighting this. And in turn, end up spending taxpayer money for the county to do so. I mean, where's the moral compass here, there's no check or balance anywhere to ensure that. This governing body is doing the right thing, it's run amok, it's run like a Russian oligarchy where the rich and elite rule. As opposed to. A organization that makes rulings off of findings of fact. And codes and laws, uh, I'm not sure what's going on here, but this has got to stop. I, I'm tired of listening to people talk about getting it in there, let's do what we gotta do to get it in there, it's wrong. That's really all I think I want to say right now, but uh, questions?
No questions, thank you. Okay, by, before I left off. Thank you, uh, I think maybe Mr. Johnson might have confused the zoning commission with the planning commission and. We're big boys. I, I know, but I for one appreciate that you've bent over backwards and involved the public in this process, so. Uh, I would like to address some of the things in the staff report because I don't know if you all have it.
They did, what? You know, I, in my prior profession, there used to be a statement that if you're winning, don't say anymore. And I think if, okay, the commission correctly, you know, we're all in favor on the rural. Presidential, on the ag forest, the question is rural service center, we don't need to go through the. I know, I know you're probably dying to do this, but.
No, I'm not dying to do it, I, I, there's a, there's kind of a pattern with staff reports and there were some things. And I wanted to point them out, if, if it's unnecessary or it's not going to help or change anything, I can let it go.
It's unnecessary.
Yeah, okay. Alright, any other comments?
Yeah, just, just one more, just one more time on the rural service center there, I, I'm sorry, but um. Even just the one that we have, okay, think about Mr. Walker, think about the guy that's, that was very angry, okay? Somebody's going to suffer, if, if one goes in there, somebody is going to suffer, not somebody, everybody around there is going to suffer. So I, I implore you to take it out of rural service center as well, the impacts are exactly the same. And all that other stuff can be fixed at a later time, but we need to stop the bleeding right now. And I'm just, if I have to beg, I will.
You don't need to beg. Okay, we, we gotta bring this.
One last thing.
I, I just want to say this before the evening's over that um, you guys and your volunteer positions on this commission. You've been through a really lengthy process and I know the general public, we're not really aware always of the incredible dedication. You've given to the county in the last couple of years, I've tried to follow it, I've printed a lot of paper. And I provided some input when I, when I can or could, um, you probably filed it under another wannabe mini planner. But you listened and I do appreciate the public comment that you have done throughout and even tonight. I know it's, it's getting late, um, so there'll be more workshops, there'll be more work, comments coming in and. Um, I just think hang in there, this tonight isn't really criticism, we're all just trying to do our part to be constructive. But thank you really for your service and dedication.
I would, I would like to add to the, to the public record, we have to ask questions.
Yes.
We must ask questions, if we just said, sure, then somebody's going to say, look at them, they just rubber stamped everything. We gotta ask questions and hopefully we're asking sensitive questions, pertinent questions to get at the right answer.
Alright, so we're going to close, close the public comment and we'll bring it back for discussion to the commission. I mean, I think my, my view of it is pretty, pretty obvious, I would, I would uh, I would modify the. The proposed motion to uh, include only rural residential. And ag forest, not rural service center, basically remove uh, conditional permit from the used table. For rural and ag forest.
Uh, it, it's interesting to me that when you go to the code as it's now written in, in uh. Twelve, three twenty-seven B, and it lists as designated neighborhood, commercial, resort, community. Or transition, then you go to the used table. And the used table, which is zoning. Ag forest, that's not in one of those designated areas. Rural, you could argue that because it's, but it's not in one of those designated areas, the rural service center is. So I think that's what you're saying.
Exactly.
Yeah, so I, and we don't know, we've got no history per se as to why it's conditionally allowed in uh, ag forest. Or residential, so I think it supports that. Um, along with, and I, I've got to agree that along with the requirements that are stated in the code. If they're applied, and, and maybe that's a problem, but the code reads that those should be, so. Yeah. That's my take on it.
Well, I've been for one, think that ought to be taken out of all three, however, rural service center. It may just be my personal opinion that I don't think they should be included there because I don't think that's the intent as I understand rural service center to be. I think it is adequately protected by the current codes and therefore it's going to kill us to uh, leave it as is for that particular one. I'm okay with basically Alan's position on this.
Alright, we have a motion? Any further discussion?
Well, um. Excuse me. The way the motion, now obviously we use prepared motions and so forth, but the way the motion is prepared. It includes all three, anyone making motion would have to amend that prepared motion. To state it the way they want to state it. Pretty cool.
Well, it's not that difficult, is it?
No, I'm just making that point because sometimes we get trapped into just reading what's here, not processing it, so. Otherwise, if you didn't agree with the motion with that, the way it's proposed, then you'd recommend denial.
Well, I think we can modify it, just eliminate and rural service center.
Somebody wants to go there.
If I can find it, I'll do it for.
Way, yeah, two pages down, pages down.
I know, I went all the way to the bottom and I'm trying to scroll back up.
Yeah, all those appendices, go back up a couple pages.
Page twelve.
Oh, page twelve of thirty-one?
Yep. Alright. And I would suggest a finding of fact. I think it's a finding of fact. Which is number five, and that is the weird, um. Inclusion, restricting um, RV, how do we refer to RV parks?
RV parks slash campgrounds?
RV parks slash campgrounds in rural service center zones would appear to be in conflict. With and not in accordance with twelve dash two twenty-seven. So that would be a further amendment to the motion.
Well, you've just lost me then, if you wanted me to try and read some of this. I finally found where I can read it, but to, to amend on the fly twice.
Chris, you're getting, if that's something that you want to include, you can just say as stated or.
As stated, then.
As discussed.
Because we also state at the end, that direct the staff to prepare the motion as talked about or whatever.
Alright, I'll give it a.
You just say, I move to recommend approval of this file as amended, to amend.
Alright, I'll make a motion, then I move to recommend approval of this file AM zero 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 two dash two five. To amend chapter three, subchapter twelve dash three 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 of title twelve, honor county revised code. Remove recreational vehicle parks slash campgrounds as a conditional use from the rural and agricultural forest. However, per our discussion tonight, not rural service center. As a, to the board of county commissioners, finding it is in accord with the general specific objectives of Bonner County Comprehensive Plan. As enumerated in the following findings of fact and conclusions of law.
I think findings of fact as amended.
As amended. Then you want me to keep reading?
Yeah.
Conclusion number one, the proposed amendment is in accord with Idaho Code Title thirty-one, Chapter seven. Conclusion two, the proposed amendment is in accordance with Idaho Code Title sixty-seven, Chapter sixty-five. Conclusion three, the proposed amendment is not in conflict with the policies of the Bonner County Comprehensive Plan. This decision is based upon the evidence submitted up to the time the staff report was prepared and testimony received at this hearing. I further move to adopt the findings of fact as amended and conclusions of law as set forth in the staff report. And directs planning staff to draft written findings and conclusions to reflect this motion. Have the chairman sign and transmit to all interested parties, this action does not result in taking a private property.
Do a second. Go second?
Hmm.
Step down from the chair and second the motion. Any further discussion? If not, uh, we'll call vote starting now there.
Hi. Hi.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Alright, motion is approved. Move to uh, the file we continued.
So. So in your, um, under today's meeting, there's one that says recommended update, a new version, a draft that I dropped in there.
Oh.
So if you go in your G drive to. How, agendas minutes and meeting packets, and then twenty-five and today's meeting, you'll see, so we're opening back up. What was that file number?
Four.
AM four twenty-five.
I, I found. Are you under the dates, today's date? Under agendas and so that.
And I'll, I'll present it on the screen as well.
So, wait, we got the revised one, Jake?
Correct.
And where is it?
So if you go under agendas, minutes and meeting packets.
Yeah.
And then you go into today's date and go into the implementation component, AM four twenty-five. Scroll to the very bottom, you should have one that says implementation component, recommended update.
Okay.
That's, and there's a, it's a red line version with track changes that shows the changes that, that were made tonight, I have two questions or three questions. Uh, to bring back to you guys.
Yeah, why don't you get, why don't you go to your questions?
Yeah, so, under the property rights component, we have the same uh, point that I brought up earlier. With something that applies to, for all land use decisions, so um. We don't adopt findings of fact or conclusions of law, for example, for vacation rental permits, so what would this could be is for um. Quasi judicial hearings or something along those lines where we can add a land use decision.
Alright, let me change that to quasi judicial.
Okay, um, and the same thing with the point number three, uh, that policy number three, I'm, I'm guessing that's what you guys meant by this, the stuff that goes before a hearing and needs those type of things. Okay, um.
What, what he's talking about, three?
Oh, no, three can, three can remain the same.
Should stay.
Yep, right. Okay, so I'll add a, a note for our, a reference to quasi judicial hearings for number two, um, and then. Just going, have I highlighted it, there it is, under transportation, um, I couldn't, I had this, a part of this highlighted. Um, and I wasn't sure what you agreed to from um, Bowman's uh, comment versus um, what you wanted it to say, so. I know you, there was some discussion about it, I didn't, I was drafting something else at the same time and.
I think it's, my point earlier was that it's too strong because it says, you know, future development should not adversely impact. The existing transportation pattern by reducing the quality of service, well, it's almost, you know, again, that's. A black and white consideration, if, if I've added one more car to the highway. Somebody, or do I have reduced the quality of service? Um, so I think it needs to be um, worded with more knee way somehow, I don't remember what we wrote.
How about, how about if we.
This is, that is what you guys wrote before, I highlight, yeah, I, there was some discussion about it and there was some suggested, there was some suggested changes. Um, I just didn't capture whatever it is you guys wanted there, so.
Eliminate quality, I think, because level of service has a meaning, I think Don can tell us that actually has a.
Yeah, yeah. You'd also tell us that we've never reached the point where we impact that, but.
Well, not in this county, probably not.
Because our roads are so, are.
Well, there's, there's aspects of level of service that certainly could be, but, and, and I, I don't know. I mean, we struggled with this, everybody across the nation struggled with this wording, yeah. Because you want to, you want to state it, but how do you make it effective and?
So level of service is too high?
Well.
Too high a bar? Quality too low?
I, I mean, it seems to me at the end of the day, it's going to involve a, a significant amount of judgment.
Yeah, oh, even creating hazards.
Right, and, and so maybe we just accept that and um, add, add some kind of adjective that qualifies.
You know, does not significantly impact the existing transportation system or some.
Yeah, I mean, there's other, other codes, other places have it, something equally big.
Well, right, because you could.
But at least it can't be interpreted as black and white, right? The way, this is my concern about the way it's written right now. It's could be interpreted in a very black and white way.
Right.
But you've affected the quality of level of service because you've added more traffic to that street.
Right.
Okay, so why would, why don't you propose rewording it?
So. Right off the top of my head, that would be my suggestion. Future development should not significantly. Now that doesn't work.
Well. Significantly reduce the level of service or create hazards. That is more quantitative. Because that's exactly what other jurisdictions that have a lot of traffic, they say like, you will not reduce the level of service below level of service D.
Yeah.
Or something, or something like that. Or if you had, if you're going to add more than a hundred peak hour trips during the, you know. Nothing around here ever rises to that level.
Right.
So.
Right.
The, any analysis would say, yep, the three cars coming from that new development don't mean a hill of beans. But all seven hundred of those three additions are going to, so. Dave's cumulative impact.
She would adversely.
So.
Not significantly.
Significantly reducing the quality or level of service or creating hazard to you.
The sticking, yeah, that's better. It's better.
Yeah.
Significantly impact rather than adversely. So you can leave in. Adverse the impact. We, we always take impact to be negative. If you add a traffic signal, that's an impact on the.
So I would move the significant in front of reducing. I think it makes more, my, my first thought was put it.
Significant, ah, yes, 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 significantly reducing.
Don't adversely impact the existing transportation system by significantly reducing quality or level of service. Or creating hazards or congest.
That puts the qualifier in the right place.
So there's some. We've opened it up for judgment, but it's got to be a judgment call anyway.
Yeah.
Unless you're going to try and quantify it, but that's.
I'm thinking through like subdivision applications again, we usually get some kind of comment from road and bridge about road and bridge depart. Oh man, it's getting like, the road and bridge department about like the impact that has on that, on that road system and then. Whether or not the road system can handle that, that new load and it's all based on the trips per day. So and generally, if it's a paved road, it's, yep, they can handle that impact, so.
Very much.
Okay.
They're not going to have the three thousand lot subsidy here, so.
Well, maybe.
I think those were the only couple of spots, so.
I think other than that, though, I think what we did was basically. Grammatical except those.
There was a couple of spots.
We changed.
So if the county commissioners come back and put should back in.
I will personally take responsibility and make the changes and edits myself back to the original.
I was going to say we're having, we're going to have Bowman take the responsibility. I'll be. At least we have the way it was and then it got changed, we should back to the way it was or something. Hey, 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 all right.
On the transportation, did you agree? Go back to where that was.
Which one?
On the, all of the require, require road networks, I thought there was some discussion about that. I wasn't sure where you guys had.
Yeah, we didn't like require.
Okay.
So.
Do you want to not have any of those? Just leave the should statement then?
I stuck in need to be built to, it was the same, it should be built, so. Yeah, we took out the requires.
That's what I thought, okay.
Yeah.
So. We should have highlighted those.
Yes, good catch.
Oh, but they're in here. Are you going to take those out again?
I'm working on it.
Yeah, he's, it's, it's here, but he's gonna, like you said, he didn't highlight them.
We're taking out required, but are we implementing should back in those yet?
Yeah, yeah. That's the only option.
Okay. Okay, I think that was it.
Yeah.
Okay, has everybody had a chance to kind of run through this?
Yeah.
Yep.
Now. So. How does this work? Just as amended.
Yeah, recommendations as amended during the hearing.
Because it went to public notice the other way and now we've amended it, so.
Yep, so this will get published as the recommended update. So when we do a new notice to the, for the county commissioners hearing.
Yeah.
This will be the, the revision or the draft that is.
And it'll be clean.
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll get rid of all the red lines, absolutely. I left them in there so you can see what changes were being.
Yeah, that's good.
Has to be.
Yeah, absolutely.
But that was just our work, actually.
Did you guys see anything else that I may have missed?
I, I don't.
I know you had all of like five minutes to look at it.
Oh, what about under housing? We talked about policy number four, provide. Provide opportunities. For incentive living and. We talked about, there's no way to provide them.
Oh, yeah. It's on page fourteen. Do you recall what you guys landed on?
Well.
We, I did add that, yep. So there was a, the goal is provide a regulatory environment.
Right.
And I think that with number four, I think it was agreed on to leave provide.
Still works.
Yeah.
With the provide.
Because the provide is in reference to the regulatory environment.
Opportunities versus delivering shelters.
The opportunities come from the zoning code, not as in like we're buying land to provide to people, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Stuck out. Okay, other than that. We took out. Very large, very productive agricultural lands.
Mm-hmm.
Good. And I think that's it.
Okay.
Okay.
Right, if somebody wanted to, oh, I was going to add a. Finding of that.
Go on to three.
I would suggest that we add a. We had a, a finding of fact that. The implementation component as amended is consistent with the currently adopted or recommended comp plan components, comprehensive plan components.
Okay.
So finding effect number three. Talks about the implementation, about the implementation. All right, so I see what you're doing. The currently adopted, because all the rest of them, no, we've got the land use.
That's why I say currently adopted or recommended.
Or recommended, okay. Okay. Ready for motion?
I am.
Okay, this Commissioner Davis. I move to recommend to the Board of County Commissioners adoption of an amendment to the implementation component. Updating goals, objectives and policies of the comprehensive plan as presented and amended. Today at this hearing, in the, in this hearing. Finding that it is in accord with the Idaho State Code as enumerated in the following findings of fact and conclusions of law as amended. And, and based on the evidence submitted up to the time staff report was prepared and testimony received at this hearing, I further move to adopt the finding following findings of fact as amended. And conclusions of law as written. The action does not result in taking a private property.
This is a frank and thoughtful second to that move.
All right, so I moved to seconded. Any further discussion? No further discussion, I'll have a. Vote, starting with Matt.
Aye.
Aye.
Davis, aye.
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 Motion is approved. All right, so we have.
Before we're over. I, I want to thank Mr. Bowman for doing the diligent work that he did to bring forward those amendments. We look at things a dozen times and we see the same thing and somebody else looks at them and say, oh, wait a minute, what about this? And they were, I think they were very appropriate changes.
Appreciate, especially definitely.
Well, yes.
We read everything.
That's one. Dave, that's.
Late or not. All right. Also have on the agenda, the. MLD discussion, we have Jake has. Given us some revisions, proposed revisions after our discussion last time we discussed this, which I guess was last meeting. And we have a red line version. Jake, you want to go over any of the, kind of the?
Yeah.
The main.
Yeah.
Points here.
So I think I've gathered all of the input we got, we got from the last meeting and maybe those. Come on, Alex. Since the last meeting. We are, in addition, we, we pulled in a couple other minor edits that I think were relevant to this and I'll bring up those individually. So under four, four dash two, if we're going to, if we're going to add new lots created. Are we going to require the sanitary restriction lift? I think it's relevant to remove it from the use table, so there's not a confusion. Chapter six is going to state that. All new lots versus just the ones as shown in the, by reference in chapter four, so.
I'll read the front page on that.
Correct, very, right there.
Use tables, just scratch in those notes.
Sorry if it's too small. It's also on the digital underneath the chapter six. For, I think it's on, it's on your guys'.
Main drive, go to the homepage or your, your home drive.
It should be found under.
Just.
Draft, chapter six changes. And then there's one at the bottom that says chapter six, planning commission draft. We just downloaded the entirety of chapter six, so there's some stuff in here that is not being modified, but just included. Yes, Mr. Wenska.
So it's occurring the way it says right now, minor land divisions.
Mm-hmm.
Seventy-two, that, number thirteen?
They are, all land divisions are. It's, it depends on the size of the property.
Okay.
So what's being proposed from the discussion last, what, two weeks ago, was that all lots created, essentially all, all lots created through any kind of land division, earning required sanitary restriction lift, so. Removing it there makes sense, I think. And then. Under twelve, six hundred, there's just a list of the subchapters, so it's just modifying that list to the new, to the new subchapters as proposed. We've. Changed the, the name of short plat to short subdivisions, so you'll see that change throughout as well as removing six point six. Rather than remove that and renumber all the other codes after that, we just put it in as reserved in case we ever want to add something else later, we have a spot for it. So that's why we're labeling it as reserved. If you disagree with that, we can go through the effort of going and modifying all the numbers, but it saves us that effort, so.
I think that's a wonderful idea.
Okay.
Thanks, reserved.
Thank you. So you'll see that in a number of places. Twelve, six hundred, that's the same changes I think we proposed last time. Said short plant. We're, we're proposing to remove the definitions and leaving that as reserved under twelve, six, eleven and moving those to chapter eight, so you'll see those at the very, very end of the proposed amendment. It's just, I'm not sure why these. Definitions were included here versus in chapter eight where all the other definitions are, so proposing to move those. I think we, I think we discussed that last time. So. This is relabeling twelve, I think that's what we're doing. Let's see, twelve, six, one, three is now other land divisions and adjustment process. I think rather than, what was the current name of that, Alex? Twelve, six, thirteen? Yeah, notice of land division. So we're incorporating those changes we discussed. I think we had some proposed changes there to, to expand the list. I saw a note earlier today that to look at Cootney County's list, if you'd like me to still do that, I, I haven't done that and incorporated there, like the list of family members to this as well. Let's see. I think that's it. Like I said, it was just re, reorganizing these code sections to make it make more sense versus the additional requirements, I think is what it was called before. So we've kind of pulled those away or pulled those out from each other. The rest of these are short plants, changing to subdivision. Now we skipping all the way to. What page are we on? Five. There was a couple of standards here that were discussed last time, the sewage disposal method, now it's.
Excuse me, back to, back to six A. It just needs another word in there. Planning director or designee shall examine the application. And supporting documents. Take the.
Twelve, six hundred.
And stick it in between examine and application.
What number is that?
Six, six thirteen.
Six.
Six thirteen A, six thirteen, six A.
Six thirteen, six A.
The lead in sentence. Shall examine.
Designee should, shall examine.
Application and supporting documents. It's just.
Yeah.
The word was added or something, so the.
We can pull out or designate, because if you look at the definition of planning director, it says the planning director or designate, so it's kind of we're done.
Make everything consistent.
I think that was a copy from another spot.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
And let's see.
Okay.
And then. So my general question. So when somebody does a family division. That's not a plat. So it's, it's not creating lots, it's still designated parcels.
Correct.
All right.
That's, which is great, because if you look at the definition under chapter eight, it says lots and parcels are used semantically.
Yeah.
But we, we specifically call them different in when we look at platted lots versus unplatted parcels. And when you talk to the assessor's office, they use them interchangeably, so.
Yeah.
Everything to them is either parcels and sometimes they call them lots. So it's, it's great to try to keep it straight. Generally, when you see this, parcels is unplatted and lots is platted, so.
Exactly. So says so on a plat.
Correct.
Plats, a lot, six, lot seven, block one.
Are we, are we down to waiver of land division now? I thought we were going to leave that at twenty, not four.
Yes, it is twenty, and we put the exemption in here that is that parcels within the forest forty must be forty acres. So.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So.
My question.
I was just reading the red.
Yeah.
So it's twenty or more and they also have to meet the applicable.
Yeah. Correct.
Section this.
So I'm on page seven.
Down there on, to where it looks like Alex made the comment, should we include twelve, six, twenty-three?
Yeah. This is on boundary land just once, I, I'm not sure if it should be or not. Yeah, feel free, grab a microphone, right?
Not, I, for plants, I, I think, I think I see what you're saying.
He's saying if you're doing a boundary line adjustment to lower, to, to lower the lot size below two and a half, for example, in suburban, then, so you're taking a very specific scenario, an unplatted parcel in a higher density zone, your suburban or alpine or wherever. That should it be allowed if you're connected to urban service, for example, so if you're going from two and a half to one acre and you have urban water, so. Go ahead, did I capture that right?
Yes.
Okay.
So are we still, let's see.
Because without, without the reference, we're saying that you cannot reduce it below that. Yes.
So in, indeed, new deed. The wording that's added, exception par. Um, the wording that's added, exception parcels must within the forest forty. Within, but then.
We had a couple of drafts.
So I. Uh, that brought to mind. It says they must be. Exception parcels within the forest forty district must be at least forty acres so they can be divided. I mean, what? I, now I read it again, like, I understand what it means, but.
You take the most of.
What if, yeah, take the.
Yeah, I did.
But what if somebody has a hundred and twenty acre parcel in, um, rural five?
They can divide it.
Twenty acre?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah. So I, I think it was brought up that if I have, you know, through waiver land division on the forest forty, can I create a twenty acre piece? And I said, no.
No.
Because the, the minimum lot or minimum parcel size, lot size was twenty acre or forty acres.
Yeah. Okay, that, that's.
That just.
Explained it, but.
Given that that's the only zone that is a forty acre minimum.
Right.
We thought we'd explicitly call out the zone versus make a general statement of.
Yeah.
You know, you must comply with the minimum lot size of the zone, cause then it says, oh, maybe I can create a, a five acre piece in a five acre zone this way, it's like, well, no. That's not what it means either.
Okey.
So should, going back to boundary line adjustments to, or, uh, E two, should we, um, add twelve? Six, two, three to that list?
To me, it makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay.
You're still in the same zone. You're still in the suburban zone.
You're not adding, you're not adding parcels.
Are you bouncing back up to the waiver?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, well, right, because, yeah, above, the, the language is already there, the resulting parcel size, size is not less than twenty. The resulting parcel size must be not less than. Or at least. Good wording.
When I was referring to that addition, I, the, exception.
Right.
Parcels.
Right. But there's this, at least forty acres, not less than twenty, not, well, less than forty acres.
I just meant resulting parcel.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, that's further clarification.
That, that's easy.
Well, it's used as an exception.
Uh, regardless, it's, it's saying that the.
Yeah, it's gotta be at least forty acres, so.
What's being created.
Resulting.
Yeah. Well, that, what that then says is like, if I have sixty. By sixty acres of forest forty, I can't create a forty and the resulting, right? It's like, oh, I created a forty, but I also have a twenty. So if this, the resulting parcels, anything resulting from this, all have to be forty acres, so that's probably why they have the resulting in there.
So. Jimmy, about this, how does this? Paragraph intersect with the? And I, I'm just gonna call it the administrative allowances for minor variations. In minimum lot size, you know, I think you, I don't know what the code would allow, I remember it's a ten percent or something.
From lot size minimums?
Yeah.
Yeah, because see, a lot of those, especially a lot of those forty percent, they're in the government lots. Yeah, as government lots are irregular, I mean, I've seen government lots, well, supposed to be, you know, allocated as northwest.
Are you mean the allocu- allocu- land divisions? And we call out one sixteen allocu- descriptions and. I thi- it might be really beneficial to have a survey or explain allocu- divisions, because. None of them, almost none of them are exactly forty or twenty or a quarter of a quarter.
It's all done by the general land office back in eighteen ninety-two, and they said, this is this and everything's square.
Yeah, Grant Dorman sat down and kind of schooled me on how allocu- land divisions, um, and the difference, and you can, yeah. Yeah, exactly, so. It's, it's really interesting, and that's why we call out either or of these. Um, there are some provisions that, and those are for platted lots that allow for like a rounding. Um, if you're creating like, was it nineteen, one point nine five and it rounds?
Gives you a five hundred seven.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's in. That's in four eleven or four twelve, right?
Just well.
Four eleven, so on your, it's only in the, the low density zones, so fives, tens and twenties. But more often than not, what we're seeing here is. We, we do check the, that, that what the resultant properties are creating forty acres, so. What's great is when you, you intersect this with like the surveyor's rules and they have their own rounding rules, so they can tell you it's forty, but when it's only thirty-nine point nine eight. But they can round up. How do I ever figure that one out, right? Cause we, yeah, anyways. Okay, so we added twelve, six, two, three to that, that list under, um. Moving on to notice of land division procedure. Any other questions on that? So some of these are just changing references to the new code sections. So, or just to the, the number changes. Okay, moving on.
Yep.
Okay.
Moving on.
So like I said, some of these are just changing by ref- references, and then, uh, we're, we're now calling to that, the definitions in twelve, eight, one, nine. Um, so you'll see that, uh, throughout here and then just adding short subdivision. I'm gonna skip forward a bit, um. This is under twelve, six, two, three services and utilities. So this is the, the change you guys requested for new lots created, uh, through any land division process shall include the sanitary restriction lift. And to answer your question on this, Alex, you put, would, would we require sanitary lift for urban sewer? Yes. Because there's a, there's a process on urban sewer that they have to go through and apply through P H D. And it's a good question to ask, because P H D does the review and they're part of the enforcing, if you wanna call it that, arm of D E Q. So when D E Q goes to extend sewer mains, and that's what they approve is the extension of sewer mains. Um, P H D is gonna, is gonna reference with them, so I think Catherine mentioned that at one of her meetings here with you guys. That they want to review all of them even inside of an urban sewer, uh, cause they're, they're checking for the capacity of that sewer district.
Um, though a family split is not a subdivision, but it's a division. So it falls under this requirement.
No, it, oh, did. I don't think. No, cause that's lots, so we, you guys wanted me to add something to the family division, and I don't think I did.
Any land division, so is it the lots that kick it out?
Well, let's look at, yeah, the definition of lots. Cause I know it says currently.
Yeah.
Is it include family? No, lots are, are parcels created through the subdivision.
Right, that's what I'm thinking, so that's what I was saying, but it, it is, it is viewed as a land division. A family split.
To, to make this really clear, Cootney County had a really good comment, or really good res- um, requirement in their family division. And I was gonna copy that and I forgot to do it, so.
Okay.
Copy, um.
It's just where it uses both terms in the sentence, I'm. Which one?
Cause it's.
So you're gonna revise, gonna revise this section?
I'm gonna revise twelve, six, thirteen, A, the family division to include the, a, a provision for a sanitary restriction lift. Or san- they had a different verb, verbiage for it, we talked about it with Catherine at the last meeting and she thought that was really good, so I, I think we're just, I'll just copy that.
Good. Good, good, good.
Okay. Six, two, three, so I think Alex left a note on here, do we want to tackle or discuss, um? The fire district, uh, stuff, if you wanna, you wanna. Should we address at some point, this at some point, many of the fire districts will not connect to private systems. I'd recommend removing two and four and amending five to the satisfaction applicable fire district or something along those lines, so. This is a, it's a fairly antiquated list. Looks like it was created in two thousand eight, and it looks like there was some minor update in twenty twenty, I don't recall what that is.
Two thousand twenty?
Yeah. I think it's, they added five to, in twenty twenty. Cause there was a lot of, of fire districts that. They kept getting these requirements and they wanted to have the, uh, ability to essentially sign off without having the requirement met. And I think they added number five in twenty twenty.
Yeah, so my ca- comment came in, it's mostly from. Well, I guess it's mostly for number two. Um, I believe we talked with Chief Armstrong at sometime last year, um. And he had a problem with that note because.
Um, no maintenance.
Right, yeah, he has no idea the quality of the water, the quality of the tank, what's been in there, he doesn't wanna hook his. His engine up to that and possibly ruin the engine.
Right.
So, um. I mean, that, that's probably the one that's the most. Um. Antiquated, if you wanna say that, in there, or maybe the most, um. Uh. Uh, I don't know the right word for it, but.
Well, I, so, just for like a point of reference, oftentimes we'll get someone coming in for a building location permit on a plat that has this note requirement. So we tell them, you need to show us proof that you have a two thousand gallon storage tank, or get it, get a waiver from your fire district. Every single time they've gotten a waiver from their fire district, I don't think anybody has ever installed a two thousand gallon fire tank on an individual property. For fire suppression, because the, the consensus we get from the, the chiefs is. There's no maintenance requirement, we don't know what's in there, we're gonna suck up frogs and rocks and, um, algae and.
Even if it's clean water.
Yeah.
Two thousand gallons, that four hundred fifty gallons a minute.
Yep.
The exterior wet, you're gonna fill the hose.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so they've all said that, they've said, it's useless, it's a, it's a waste of money.
So do we want to allow that to, um, to be the requir- or to be allowed on plats moving forward? So that's one of the allowances on the plat.
Doesn't seem. It may be, been a good idea, but.
I say get rid of it, at some point somebody will just take advantage of it if we don't.
Yeah.
Get up a glove, we're talking about a thousand gallons per minute. Two gallons, two thousand gallon tank, that's two inches.
That's after messing around with it, with the connection.
So I, maybe we don't include it in this revision and we. Put a pin in this for later, I'm, I'm fine including it here, it's, it's a little bit, it's a lot different than the other stuff we've been talking about, cause it's a specific fire standard.
I hope the discussions with the fire districts are not over.
Hmm.
I don't think they are.
Can I just?
Sure, fire district.
Well, uh.
This is a workshop.
So we just, I'm sorry?
It's a workshop, so you.
Okay, so we just, uh, did one that's in the Seringa Water District and. It was the tur- Chief Armstrong. Was, did, I, I don't remember how many homes are going in there, you, you guys might know, uh, but.
Twenty. I remember, right?
The, the idea was, he, one of the proposals was to put in two thousand gallons at each residence, well, then if we show up there. Now we empty one tank, we gotta switch to the next one and the next one, so it got worked out with the developer to put in one, I for, you got.
It's a very large.
Yeah, sixty thousand, yeah.
Yeah, it's a, it's a very large.
Yeah, and. And then some, um. Well, what do I say, some, it is. He was given a little, uh, leniency on. Certain things because it was a compromise, put it that way, so it's gonna be put. Like, there's a minimum distance, uh, six hundred feet, I think, and so with, that lot, if I remember right, is a little over two thousand feet from one end to the other, and we said, if you put it right in the middle. It'll, you know. It'll be more than six hundred, but because you're doing this, well, you know, he's trying to find a way to make it work.
I think they require, they're gonna have like the H O A maintain it as well, right? I think there was that maintenance asked.
There's something in there, yeah.
Yeah, I think so. Which of course you'd rather have a, a body that's responsible for maintenance versus individual.
Yeah.
With individual, uh, tanks on it, on.
What's the problems of leaving this in here, just so that it generates that kind of conversation?
Yeah, because it's one of the allowances that a plat can use, so rather than meet one of these other standards, they can say, hey, I'm gonna do this.
And then it's useless. Alright. Yeah, I.
Um, and I can, I mean, we're gonna route this to the fire districts, um, and I can try to get an email to the individual ones asking like, what is your thought on, on this standard?
I, I think that's it, highlight this portion, I'd just say, this is useful.
Yeah.
When it gets robed.
Yeah.
Cause you want.
Jake, there's, there's, um, sometimes when you're referencing the eight, eight hundred sections.
Mm-hmm.
Including their B C R, so I don't think that's necessary.
Probably not.
We don't have.
We don't have it throughout the other spots in the code. Okay.
Okay.
I'll try to fix that. Um, scrolling down to roads and access, so. A minor edit there that's fairly impactful, so all new roads created shall be designated with, by, rather than just four subdivisions. Cause that has a specific definition, so. I'm just, call it out, and then the question is, do we wanna address, I think we, we had a brief conversation about the. What's required for direct frontage on, on public roads, do we wanna re- remain at five acres or reduce that to two and a half or some other number? I know that. The, the, really this comes from the road and bridge department, with, they don't like the standard at all, they want no requirement for frontage on public roads. They want all roads to be private and no new public roads to come into existence, so I. I don't understand the logic and I can get them in the room if you guys want to, or get a comment from them.
Why don't we change it to two and a half?
Their purpose is, cause they hate all those, uh.
Yeah.
Yeah, they can't, you get the lots that are minimum frontage. And you can't space out the approaches. Especially, I mean, whether. We do have arterials and they're supposed to move traffic and not be congested while we're turning movements coming in and out of driveways and hazard areas. I don't know.
And there's also the expectation that I live on a public road, therefore the county should maintain it, right?
Well. It wasn't here at the time, public right of way and public, yeah, I said. No, maintain privately or public, I like.
Yep. Yep.
Well. Cause that was the thing. Public right of way in Idaho is not at all making, so.
So is the thought to just eliminate this paragraph?
I mean, that's one aspect, but it, it is the distinction between high and low density, right? So.
Yeah.
That, when, when you get below five acres, you're talking higher density zones, so that's your suburban and rec and alpine, so.
And because we, we're never gonna increase. By any. Any measure, the county maintain road system. So all the areas between those county roads, which are miles apart. It's a parallel or perpendicular, that's gotta be served by private roads.
Mm-hmm.
And so to have a requirement for a five acre or below even to have direct access and frontage on a maintained public road is. Isn't gonna happen.
This also doesn't stop someone from dedicating something, uh, as a public roads, I mean, this is just a requirement, so it still could be. I'm taking a, you have a subdivision and maybe to meet depth to width, rather to have longer skinnier lots, they, they wanna dedicate the road so the lots become. You know, more, you know, more conforming to a lot, yeah, to the lot dimension standard, so.
Why don't we leave it the way it is and we'll see, get their comments.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay.
So. I'm scrolling.
Right, there aren't many changes.
Okay.
Well. Six, twenty-five, am I there now?
We're, I'm at six point four, six, two, five. I don't think there's anything in six, twenty-five, it's not.
Thing is. Is there a Bonner County Trail Plan?
No.
No. There isn't. So we're requiring subdivisions integrated. What? There's nothing to integrate.
Yeah.
So I, it's either scrap the whole thing or, and we didn't put, purposely didn't put. Reflect this in the transportation component.
Mm-hmm.
That we should develop, go back and finish developing the trail plan. So I, I, yeah.
This has been in since.
All came from two thousand three, two thousand four.
Yep.
Um, and actually it's, it was in the ordinance for two thousand eight, but that's what started it, and then we picked it all up again and. Yeah. I, I, I.
I'm, I'm fine scrapping that all together, um, it is a point of conversation with every. Subdivision, and then we tell them there is no adopted trail plan, and that's usually the end of the conversation, there are some provisions in here about sidewalks. Um, that apply to.
Well, okay, you need to include that, I mean, number, item three. Or paragraph three. Yeah.
So I'll, I'll highlight this and then make a comment on it. Uh, rework to just, um, rather than trip, I don't know why parks is in there, cause I don't think we even reference parks in here. No. Trails and parks, it's. It should just be changed to sidewalks and just have the sidewalk standard, is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, B is covering parks. Public access parks and facilities?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, well, so, so A would basically be parks and pathways.
Mm-hmm.
And B would be access to parks and facilities.
Okay, yeah.
Well. Well, okay, so if we said keeping three. A three sidewalks and pathways. Um. Make a distinction between, you got twelve thousand square foot lots, what? Even pathways, it's still there, but. Conservation subdivisions in the rural or AF districts are exempt, except where there are more than ten contiguous residential lots averaging. Less than twelve thousand square feet in size. I suppose that could happen in a conservation subdivision in Ag Forest District. Hasn't yet.
The, the entire conservation subdivision, I, I actually spoke with one of the planners who helped develop that back in two thousand four.
Yeah.
I think he works for a large planning firm in Seattle now. And uh, he's like, whatever came of that? How many of you, have you guys had like a big amount, two? In since oh four, like, is it really needed?
Really small.
And there's one other guy who was super interested and I don't think it's gonna happen. So it, it's, it's been discussed a number of times. I think we've had two. Two applications that I, that I know of, so.
And you talk about.
Yeah.
Affecting rural character. Do you have one of these with small lots and a big conservation lot?
Mm hmm.
And sidewalks? People are gonna go crazy.
Yeah, I don't think. Probably very few areas in the county that would sidewalks would be appropriate. So why don't we take it?
A pathway system or trail? Yeah, sure. That sounds really good. And it, it's, but it can be very rural.
I live in a recreation district and there are no sidewalks. I wouldn't want.
Got even any shoulders out there?
No.
I think the pathway system. It says it's gotta connect all residential lots, so it's, sounds like a sidewalk, maybe with just different circles.
Yeah, yeah, it could be. It could, well, even that, even that, that's a sidewalks. Don't need to have curb and gutter. Seems to me like that if you're gonna have a major subdivision in any of these zones, it's probably gonna be a PUD.
Mm hmm.
And you can impose that requirement on a PUD without having this section in here.
Yeah.
True. I don't think this section means anything.
The only thing I can think of would be if it's adjacent to a, a um, uh, city limits, right where you want. But that goes back to the, our other, other. Uh, idea.
Large lots there.
They want large lots. Well, we could, we could impose a, a standard that says if you're within the area of impact that you have to seek. I think this is where our brainstorming is, you have to seek um. Annexation into the city before coming in for a land division. But that's a, that's a very big change, I get it. Um, but that would ensure that especially like large subdivisions on the, you know, adjacent to cities, that the cities, you know, controlling that growth, so.
Aren't they mandated by state law basically to do that? I mean, they're supposed to be. Well, yeah, the, 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 the area of impact or area of interest, whatever it's called now.
Area of impact, yeah.
It's supposed to be an area that they can annex within five years.
But there's no requirement that they land order must. That's the thing, it's still the three options for annexation are there.
Yeah, but if, if it's, if the annexation isn't going to occur for whatever reason, the city doesn't want it or the people don't want it.
They gonna have.
Then it's not gonna happen and then, and it shouldn't be an area of interest.
I'm, I'm just saying whether or not we wanna make a compulsory on any land division. It, it gives a lot more control to the cities.
Yeah.
I don't think there's any harm in it. And it causes the city to kind of.
I'm thinking the one just over the track, right? It's, it's right next to the city limits.
Causes the city to really think what they're doing.
Yeah, and it might require them to shrink their area of impact, like, well, we, we can't really serve those and we, we've denied five of these, cause we don't wanna do it. So.
Yeah.
Well, then, Sam always said, well, it's up to the same level of service, it's gonna be different services.
I don't know.
So I guess where, where we are is we're gonna eliminate A.
Yeah. A altogether, is that what I'm hearing?
Right, then B will be A.
You know, if you force the developers to comply, this came up in the last season too, the developer can just make themselves undesirable for the city. Unwilling to comply with this or that, that they provide with their tool. Ensuring that they're not gonna want it, that the city doesn't want it.
We don't want you. Yeah, we don't want you.
Well, provident.
Yeah, well, that case of.
But seriously, really, that means it's got to be annexed. So if it's not gonna be annexed, it should be taken out of the area.
And then we should be looking at, having it kind of, have a density to make sense to us.
Right.
Right?
Yeah.
Which doesn't mean more density.
No.
More density should be next to the city, but it doesn't make sense the way we wanna see it counted.
Mm hmm.
So.
So where we add that standard, I don't know, but. We'll have to look like where the best place is. Um, so moving on past that, conservation subdivisions, I. It would, I know they are not being utilized, it would be really big to change that now, um. There is a, a problem with the PUD code and the conservation subdivision code, where there's like this infinite loop on standards. It's been really difficult to try to figure out. Um, Tyson Lewis, I think, lost most of his hair when he was doing one of these. Um, they just call back to each other and what standards should apply, so. Yeah, exactly. I think that's what he kept saying.
What section do you want now?
I, I'm moving past, I'm just complaining about a different section, so this, I'm on. I'm on six point four, so going into the, to the subdivision procedure.
One quick question for you.
Sure.
Bob, cause I see some of these other comments right there, I think it's.
That's where I'm at now, yeah.
This short subdivision, it takes a little bit.
Correct.
So is it still gonna be administrative?
Right now, yeah, that's the way it's still crafted. I don't think I heard that as a change that was requested by the commission. So the question is whether or not procedurally or not, uh, format related, do we, do we include that as, as. Inside the subdivision chapter versus its own chapter? Is that what I'm hearing, Alex? That we, you were talking about this earlier.
Mostly because it would be for continuity with standard review. And, cause they're gonna be the same standards, just the only difference would be at this point.
Decision.
The decision making, so. Um, and I think we could work in the short subdivision in there, just say that six point four. Under subdivision procedures, that short subdivisions uh are also regulated under that section or however. Uh, to where, rather than having a separate subchapter of it, basically just saying. Refer to six point four, cause that's essentially what it's what it's saying.
Yeah.
Uh, and then just make it, you know, its own uh section, see.
Are we down on six point four now?
Yeah. Are we done with or are we down on?
We're down to.
Yes, that's correct.
You wanna explain uh the deletions there, Jake?
Say that again?
You want us to explain the, the deletions you did here?
Yeah. Um, so we haven't been processing condominium plats, um, that was, we don't have a section six point eight anymore. So when that was removed from the code, I think in twenty-two or twenty-one, twenty-one. Um, it just looks like it was missed in the condo platform removal. So that's the deletion there. Um, and then the other one is just to call back to short subdivisions versus short plots. Um, okay, so down, down to twelve, six, four, three. Um. So right now, the. The zoning commission, so we have this conflict with the code in chapter two, where called, the hearing examiner has a list of. Of, of the jurisdiction assigned to that individual to include decisions on preliminary plants. And then you have this other code section that talk, and then the zoning commission has that same jurisdiction to make that, those decisions. Um, where you have the twelve, six, four, three, so there's this conflict here. Um, I spoke with legal, legal counsel about it a bunch earlier this year and we've decided now to process subdivision applications. And send them all to the zoning commission until this code gets revised, cause um. We don't know, does the hearing examiner have less authority? Do they have to follow the same standards of review here on decision making or um? Are they exempt from this, this standard? So rather than try to ferret out all those, we decided to. Just send all those applications to the zoning commission and then make the changes uh here. So. At, at the bare minimum, I think, uh, changing and adding the hearing examiner to this makes a lot of sense. Um, the other changes that I've drafted here and this is, I'm not really taking a position on it, it's more of a food for thought. Um. Do we want the hearing examiner and the zoning commission to be able to make the actual decisions on preliminary plants versus a recommendation to the board? So um, right now it's a two-step process, uh, two different hearings. If you go back to the history behind why, um, the board some years ago, uh, didn't like that. The planning and zoning was denying a lot of applications and, and then they were getting appealed and overturned by the board. So the board just. They worked through and said, let's just remove that ability from the planning and zoning and um, everything comes to us, so. The way this is crafted, uh, the hearing examiner or the zoning commissioner will make the decision on, on the preliminary plat. And then any appeals would go uh through the appeal process in chapter two and get appealed to the board accounting commissioners. So if we're. Part of the thought here is if we're getting rid of the administrative or the, the minor land division, and you're gonna end up seeing more. Uh, applications for subdivisions. So part of this is an allowance to those to allow for a shorter administrative review process. Again, appeal will still be the board, so. I've had a lot of frustration from individuals when they talk about a two-step process for um, a preliminary plat, so.
Theory. If a subdivision is already proposed within the present zone, so there's no change there.
Yep.
So that hurdle number one, where, where there should be a whole lot of investigation to see if that's an appropriate zone for the area. But so a subdivision comes in and it complies with that, so it's, it's mainly, it's the plat.
Mm hmm.
How's it laid out? And are there enough conditions and requirements in the plat code? That says here's the depth of width ratio, here's the roads, here's the this, here's the that. What's left to decide, kind of thing. I, I can't remember why planning and zoning made a bunch of, of. Uh, denial recommendations in the past.
I don't know. I, I just remember asking Milton about this, why is there a two-step process? And that's what he told me, so.
Can't recall, at least in the last ten years, I don't think there's been. Last, the first seven, the last ten years, why, that there are a lot of, of denial recommendations for preliminary flats for planning and zoning, you know?
Well, it's kind of interesting, cause Luther for, for subdivisions, doesn't even require a hearing.
Yeah.
No, as a matter of fact, that Jerry Mason, you know, he gave, which we sent those links to. All of us. Should be stepping away from that.
I think.
Again, it, it already needs zoning.
There's a lot of public interest in um, in especially larger subdivisions and even like PUDs, so. I think it would be really, I, I don't think it'd be supported by either the commissioners or the general public to make those all administrative review. So, but having allowance for a single hearing, um, I think makes sense, uh. With, uh, again, those are all appealable to the board. So do we wanna put that onus on the individuals to have to appeal that to get their voice heard? They're gonna have one hearing, so I, I don't know. I, like I said, I, I can see the pros and cons to this, um, and I thought I'd bring it up for discussions.
Yeah.
I'll keep it in here.
Okay.
For now.
Alright, so those are the changes there. The other one I have highlighted is um, preliminary plats. Right now, it's, they're only valid uh not to exceed two years. The PUDs are allowed for four years, um. And I've had a number, a, a pretty large number of, of plats coming in. Close to that two-year mark and seeking uh extension, so. Um, right now, those, those are all extended by the board accounting commissioners, which I also thought was odd, um. Even for short plats, they're required to go to the board for extension, so. To me, the short plat should be extended by administrative body, um, so the, the planning department, similar to the minor land divisions, I think, right now are, are, that's where it comes to. Cause that's who the decision maker is. Um, and then preliminary plats can, I think, could, could be if, if. We're gonna go the other route on the previous section, uh, extended by the zoning commission or the, or the um, uh, hearing examiner, so.
So what are you suggesting? That it be?
Four years.
I think, I think extending past the two years would be, I mean, it does take a long time to build roads and build water and sewer systems. Um, so I think extending that to three years or four years would be a, another step towards. Um, kinda helping out with the whole process, uh, cause I haven't had a single one of these for. Short plats and subdivisions, uh, as currently, as we currently have them, um, ever get denied by the board. I've denied a number of minor land division uh time extensions, um, but that was for some other rationale.
Okay. Three years, four years? What's the plan?
We said PUDs are.
Yeah, PUD, that PUD code's in chapter two, it's not found in chapter six.
Well, let's go for, let's go for three years.
Okay. And I, I can look at other jurisdictions and see what they do. Um, that's something I haven't done, so.
Well, plus the economy, um, I don't know what it's like getting a loan now for land division or land development. But I imagine like everything has gone up, so unless you're walking in just rich from the last one, now you've bought money down for this one. That's part of it and just. Everything else that's just extending the timeframe. Two years is pretty short. Fast.
I know that the bonds are the other ones right now. We're seeing less bonding, because it's just way more expensive than it was two years ago to bond, so. More people are just putting in the infrastructure and it takes time to put that in, so. Alright, um. Yep, I think that's the same. Minor changes and endorsements on the plat, uh. So rather than, I think we need to remove the sanitary restriction as allowed, cause I think we're removing that from the six, two, three, so remove it here. The, I've had, some cities have heartburn over a place for the city approval, um. They don't wanna say they're approving a land division inside their area of impact. They wanna acknowledge the, that there is one happening. Cause they have no standards for which they're reviewing it against, so they're not approving anything. So Kootenay has specifically argued with this, and they've, they've required us to change it on the plat, cause they will refuse to sign if it says approval. It's like, okay, so acknowledgement. So I think if we standardize that, it makes a lot of sense. Um, the digital submission of final plat, this is twelve, six, four, nine, this isn't. We don't have a, a way to, to view CAD files. The GIS department doesn't want to receive CAD files, nor do they have a need for them. All of our plats come in via digital means anyways. I think this was added back in twenty seventeen, because. You had surveyors refusing to submit anything but a paper plat. Um, it's the standard now that everything comes in digital, and the only time we get a physical copy is the Mylar that has to be, you know, signed and recorded, so. I talked to GIS about this, is there any rationale to keep this or revise this in a different way? Uh, between Mike and I, we decided it really doesn't need to be in the code anymore, so.
Okay, that's simple.
Okay. Um. So getting into the short plat or the short subdivision procedures. At a minimum, we need to update um, a couple of, of sections in here. Uh, C has the same. Heartburn I've had with the, the section of the minor land division code with the two-year clause, so. Matt, you're smiling at me. So the lands divided using, this is something that we had drafted in the minor land division. Um, proposed changes we had are a couple of the different versions. So I think at a minimum, we need to have something to address the two-year clause, cause it now, that still conflicts with twelve, six hundred as we have it drafted now, so. I think having the lands divided using a short subdivision are not eligible for, for the division under, by a short subdivision process, this restriction should have been noted on the plat. Future divisions of any lot, or fu- future divisions of any lot created by a short subdivision must proceed through a subdivision process, so.
I was stumbling over the title on six fifty.
Oh, yeah.
Six point five, short subdivision procedures. Six point five oh, application contents of preliminary subdivisions for short subdivision procedures.
That was a replacement and.
Do we need the last part to, for short subdivision procedure?
Well.
Application. Oh, well, yeah, application contents for preliminary. Subdivisions for short plat.
Sure.
So, for short subdivision. I, I reworded about six different ways and couldn't land on one. Because then it's, the purpose is the first one, and then you get to the application and the contents, so. I don't know. Something that clearly defines what's going on next under six fifty. The six point five lays it out broadly.
We could just put application contents.
Yeah, I would, that would do it.
I don't know if you.
You're already talking about short subdivisions, so, right, you don't need to repeat that.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, good.
And let's see. I guess good change, Jake.
What's that?
No further division?
Yeah, no further division.
Okay, you like the way that's crafted under C? Yeah. I think noting on the plat really helps future planners, cause um, we're gonna go look at the plat notes on all these. Um.
Leaving a trail.
Back to the, the comment or the question we had from Alex on, do we want to have this as its own subchapter or incorporate that into the subdivision subchapter?
Hmm.
As like two different decision-making processes, but the standards are the same. Versus copy.
And so I kinda like them separate.
Okay.
I do type of looking at it, um. Which is since one's going to be administrative. And once the other, the other. I have some more commentary on the grid on the page.
So under six fifty one, V? Four? Just little wordsmithing with area of city impact. You know, it's whatever it's called. What is it called now?
Area of impact, which is super great because it's like, what is it impacting the city?
Yeah. I will, because the legislature said so, that's why.
Yeah. I've been using the acronym AOI. I still see people using AI as the acronym because I don't like.
Use AOI. Nothing, nothing AI about.
So this should be updated because it shouldn't be a notice for forty days. It should be a notice in accordance with the. With the agreement. So I think the agreements we have right now, and I have a hearing a week from Monday with the board on seven cities. And all of those are a thirty-day notice. So the cities are.
Is that all those cities together? Because they're listed in the papers separately.
There's seven, seven different. Applications essentially. So it'll be one big hearing and we'll have each hearing item.
Because they're all listed separately at the same time.
Yeah. Yeah.
There'd be a crowd. Who's going to go for a B?
Well, I I I plan on presenting the adjoining cities, especially one because there's a couple conflicting cities. Like Dover and Sandpoint both want the same area. Cootney and Pontare have an overlap that they want. Clark Fork is fine. And.
How much discretion really is there? I mean, because it's it's pretty much prescribed by the code. It can't be more than two, two miles, right?
Can't be more than two miles and it has to be.
But you got this going on.
Yeah, there's there's an overlap. There's two cities that want the same area. And it's got to, they they tried to, they, some of them, I know Hope and East Hope had a conflict and they resolved it on their own, which was great. So now there's no, there's no, there's no area of impact geographic areas that are overlapping.
There's a conflict between Pontare and Sandpoint?
Pontare and Cootney, not Pontare and Sandpoint. Sandpoint and Dover. So I'll probably, what I'm going to be doing is presenting the the overlapping cities. I'll present one and then the next and then try to get the board to deliberate on where where should it be? So.
They have to swear that they're going to annex it within five years?
Not swear. There is a test on, like, you have to, there's, there's some rules, some statute about. I don't know if it uses reasonable, but something along the lines of reasonably can be annexed with the next five years or something like that. So. If you look at Pontare's, theirs, I think, meets like the letter of the law. Like, it is very clear. It's a very small area. They're saying, and it's all within certain, anyways, you look at their proposal, it's. I think it aligns perfectly with state statute.
And they've analyzed that they can't provide services.
Yep, exactly.
Unlike Sandpoint, it says, well, we really don't want to, but we want to annex it for tax purposes. So we're not going to provide services.
Yeah.
Down until you get down to the to the elimination of minor land divisions, most of these were just.
Yep. So I'll update that noticing timeline to just say in accordance with the. The agreement with the city or something along those lines. I think I have some verbiage.
The appropriate AI agreement.
Yeah. And then it's removal of six point six. And just that we're going to leave that to reserved. And then I don't think there's any other changes other than the chapter eight. So eight, one, nine is the. Short subdivision and subdivision. So.
Can I make some recommendations?
Sure.
Go ahead and under twelve, eight, twelve definition of lot. We need to go ahead and change that. Current says a plat of piece of land which is part of a subdivision. According to the book of plats, subdivision is also a defined term currently. The creation of eleven or more parcels. A minor land division nor a short plat creates a lot. They don't. On the letter of the law, if they don't.
That's crazy.
Always bothered me. Why are we calling these parcels created by MLD or a short flat a lot there? And they do not meet the definitions. So we need to change that definition in lot to a plat of piece of land which is part of a subdivision or short subdivision.
Yeah.
Okay. And then in subdivision.
We make the argument of subdivision, big S, little s, right? Is it the formalized defined big S subdivision or subdivision of the colloquial term of like land division? So. No, big S, little s.
We can say anywhere. Current says any division of land set forth in definition of subdivision. Section twelve, six, one, one of this title. We need to also go ahead and add short subdivision.
Where are you at? What definition?
Uh, in subdivision under. Eight nineteen, eight nineteen S.
What I have drafted here?
I guess you could, but I think.
This is why we do this.
Qualify a minor land division. Good catch. No more, you ain't deer no more.
We cut it further down, we think. Oh, there it is. Yeah, there was another one under.
So that last page, where's it supposed to be? Definitions. Most says any division of land into eleven or more lots or parcels. That do not qualify as a minor land division or.
Yeah, what a minor land division. That's what I, I just scrapped that.
Subdivision is not. So short that. Sub, a short flat subdivision cannot be subdivision.
Do we, I think we had discussed this and I was supposed to have. Like subdivision defined as a division of any, I I don't know how we define subdivision and then the process separately. We can call it major subdivision and minor or not minor, short.
Yeah, and that's why the words get thrown around, formal subdivision, but then is the other one informal? No.
What about shortened and large, shortened? Short and squat.
Well, then people, in some jurisdictions, it's short plat and long plat. That's just another term, but.
We can call it a long subdivision?
Yep.
Okay, so then we define subdivision separately.
So you're going to, you're going to take, you're going to take out that do not qualify for. Minor round division short plat, right?
Yep.
The short subdivision is a subdivision. Well, it's still.
You should probably move this.
Large parcel into.
Into subdivision.
And they should be.
It should be.
Lots. Because otherwise, I think Lupa should apply.
We use subdivision as the generic current for all of them and then shorten long. For the two specific processes.
Let me highlight that and we'll debate that tomorrow, Alex.
People will throw around subdivision.
So that's what I'm going to do here is.
But that way you can clarify this in a formal definition.
So I, I think what we're going to do and I'll workshop this with the planners tomorrow is the division of land and. The division of land into two or more platted lots as subdivision and then move all this stuff, the term subdivision shall not include. Move all that up to that definition and then have a definition of definition of short subdivision, division of land into ten or fewer. And then long subdivision, any division of land into eleven or more.
That makes sense.
And then we'll have to then change everything that says subdivision under subdivision to long subdivision. So.
So again, a family exempt from planning.
Yep.
Operation is not even a subdivision because it could never have eleven or more lots.
Right.
It's only four.
And those are parcels, not lots.
Because it's not listed here is because it doesn't even fit. Just because of the eleven doesn't fit. All right. That's my only concern. All right. Okay, one more thing. On definitions. Twelve, eight, twenty-one, urban services. Let's, I sent an email. Uh, to Chair Vice Chair here.
Yeah.
Let's get the word urban out of there. That has confused and caused so much heartburn.
Where are you at?
Yeah, Brian New is not not included here. It's just.
Yes, yeah, it's not included in there. Bring it up more, more, a new step?
Yeah.
Matt, really?
Well, like I said, three weeks ago.
So you'd like to to address?
Changing the name from urban services, calling it some, something different. Get the name urban out of there. People always say urban city. They say, well, that's a city. And I don't know, because as it's defined, it could be a private, probably more privately maintained.
Forgot what you, what you suggested.
I do too. Because that's a problem, you don't know.
Urban light.
It could know something that doesn't even occur.
Let's deal with that definition at another meeting.
Ready?
Is it sure?
So. Jake, what's? You think, are we, are we in a position to set this for hearing?
I think you got, I have all your. You answered all my questions. When I can get it set for a public hearing. I have two code amendments, right? I have the changes to chapter one and two. And then I have this. I need to go through and make some changes to the name and then verify a couple of other things.
What was the, what was the other one?
What's that?
What was the other code amendment?
The chap we wanted to, we workshop that last meeting or the meeting before. You gave me a couple of minor edits to it and then. I I still need to craft up the application and.
All right, so for the seventeenth. What's, what's the plan?
We have an application for a hearing that day. Count Plan Map Amendment, I believe.
What? We haven't had one of those forever.
I know. So that's the only thing I have on the docket right now, unless you guys want to start workshopping something else. We.
When I was.
The the board is taking up. The, so one thing we need to to talk about is the priority list that the board has presented. I don't, did I put that on this agenda?
You sent it to me.
I know I sent it to you. I I thought I had added it. Okay, so we need, we need to discuss that. And then the highest priority the board has given, so I asked, I gave the board all of the different things that the planning commission has. Discussed as to what we want, you know, what you have wanted to work on, right? And I asked them for urgency priority and like, give me the urgency, give me the priority of these tasks. Because if they're going to keep heading down in one direction, you know, make sure they're in alignment with what the board's essentially asking you guys to do. The highest priority and the highest urgency the board has for you is this new house bill that addresses broadband services. So. They're going to hold a workshop on that, I think, on the tenth. Does that sound right? I think it's the tenth. I think it's next, I think it's next Tuesday. So we can start having that discussion. Bill is supposed to have given us. We're supposed to provide to the board and to the planning department a thorough legal analysis of that bill. And it comes into effect July first. I I added a reference to that bill, to the new Lupa section. In the chapter two change that I presented, I think the board wants to do a full review of. The broadband or the cell tower use in in chapter four and. Add some additional standards. So.
So if they're doing the workshop on the tenth, what do they want us to do? They want us to also do one.
I mean, you, all of the code amendments have to come through the planning commission, right? The board can't just make the change without a recommendation. So. I don't know what's going to come up.
Figure out what they want and they need to get some legal advice because I think they're misinterpreting that code, that. That statute.
So we can add it to the agenda for the next meeting to start that discussion and I'll have, I'll have a lot more information after the tenth. This, this one's on bill for a lot of it because it's. It's a, it's a very much a legal analysis of that house bill. And there's some analysis on how it impacts planning. And then what the board wants to do with that cell tower.
They want to, they want to go to the Dalton Gardens.
When are we going to have those analysis?
Before the tenth.
That's where I was. The first thing I would want.
Agreed.
I guess I should go look at, I haven't looked and read the bill, so.
Yeah.
Well, a couple of things you need to look at. Number one, apparently there's a thought that. The state has taken away any discretion to. To review and and determine whether placement on a utility pole, an existing utility pole. Whether they can actually have any jurisdiction of that anymore. The way I read it, they do. The other thing is that they apparently are under the impression that they have to do an ordinance before July first. And I, I don't see that at all.
All right, I don't think we have enough time. We definitely.
Red statutes before. Part of my job. I don't, I I just think they're completely misinterpreting it. But other than that, anything else coming up? It could affect your life. We should be aware.
There's some APA changes. It doesn't affect you guys. There's some changes to processing time for building permits. Doesn't affect you guys. There's, that house bill is probably the only, it's because it's adding a section to Lupa at sixty-seven, sixty-five, forty.
I think it's what's, house bill one eighty.
Yeah, I think that sounds right. I I sent you guys a bunch of house bills and senate bills just to be aware of. I think the only one that really affects. Is is that one house bill. So.
Getting back to the seventeenth, we have a, because I'm probably not going to be here. So.
And I think Mr. Levitt won't be here as well. He had, he had to work late tonight and he's going to be out of town. That meeting is what he mentioned to me in the hall.
So I guess we need to. Find out if we can afford him.
Yeah, I guess that the, are the four of you guys going to be around? I don't think Mr. Taylor, we're going to see until it starts snowing again. I haven't heard from him if, you know, whether or not he's going to be at these meetings. I think the board understood that during the summer months, when they appointed him, during the summer months, we probably would see him pretty intermittently. So.
All right. So that's the only thing we've got is this file.
That file and I think, I think we need to add to the agenda, the urgency priority list and just debate that internally. And then also.
Some of that urgency priority list is moot.
Some of it is, yes.
Because we just, we just acted on two of them.
Yeah.
Which, incidentally, ranked by the county commissioners, were the lowest priorities.
I wasn't going to say that.
The highest priority is the broadband though.
Yep. Yep.
Which we haven't.
So I think, I think we need to start looking at that, given the direction from the board. So.
Well, I, I, I don't think, I think it's a waste of our time unless we get a full analysis from Bill.
Like I said, we'll, we'll get the analysis before the tenth is what Bill has told me because that's when the board's having their meeting about it and he works for them. So.
So will I be available before seventeen?
Yeah, because I'll have it, I'll have it before the tenth. Presumably. Yeah, as soon as I have it, I'll, I'll forward it on to you.
And just out of curiosity, after this house bill one eighty, what was the next on the priority list from the B O C C to us? Just in case we have to go looking for something else today.
Yeah, I don't recall. It it might have been the implementation component, which I think you guys just.
It was a, it was a one to five scale.
Yeah.
Five being the least important. Implementation component was number five.
Yeah. So this, the implementation component will have a hearing with the board in August. My plan was to workshop this at the same time we're workshopping the land use component. And I, Mr. Domke agreed with me, just double team, right? And then we'll hold the hearing for the same day for the land use component and the implementation component. So. Just know, if you don't see it, they only have one hearing date in July and I don't think we have anything in June with them. Is that right?
No, we have one scheduled.
Yeah, we have some administrative.
Workshops, we scheduled a workshop for June eighteenth.
Yeah, yeah, I don't, I don't think it's going to happen. We didn't, he didn't look at the calendar that day. So I, I've been trying to get a workshop scheduled for June. And it's been nearly impossible because BO, once Boe start by statute, they have to take all of their time on board evacuation. So they canceled one of my, two of my hearings, one of my hearings this month and the first hearing next month. So I, I only have a hearing on the twenty-third of July and then August thirteenth. So.
Okay.
So we've got a minimum agenda for a few weeks.
Yeah.
And you're not going to be available at all online or anything?
Possibly online.
Yeah, I'll cover the.
We'll see.
Operation of it.
I have a bunch of people coming in. I, I can't leave. All right. So we have talked about June seventeenth. So anything else?
Nope, that's all I got.
All right. So we are adjourned until June seventeenth, four thirty. Fifteen hundred highway two.
Put on the, on the June seventeenth agenda just to talk further about. Code changes. You know, in general, does that keep it on? It's covered.
Chapter eleven.
Chapter eleven.
And all this stuff with their, well, any.
Other code sections you were, well, we talked about.
I think we need to, I think we need to start discussing the use table in the zoning district.
Yeah.
So that's a, it's not on the urgency.
But that wasn't even on the priority list.
Yeah, I think it was third. Yeah.
That was number ten.
That, what's, what about our priorities? We know we gotta do that, it's necessary, it's needed, grossly needed. I think I have it.
Yeah. I'll get it forwarded to the, to the board or to the planning commission. Okay, are we adjourned to this chair?
Yes.
Uh, I created the list, and I gave it to the, to the board, and then they gave me the priority. Like I said, we can discuss it at the next meeting, I'll forward it to you guys after this.
All right, I got it.
Are we still on the record, Mr. Chair?